Okay. Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the public hearing for the Planning and Zoning Commission for the Town of South Windsor for Tuesday, August 17th, 2021. If everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Serving as the Vice Chairman tonight will be Michael LeBlanc and as the Secretary will be Steve Wagner. And I'll ask the Secretary to read the public notice.
Notice is hereby given that there will be a public hearing on Tuesday, August 17th, 2021 at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of the South Windsor Town Hall to consider the following. One, Application 21-30P Hartford Truck Equipment LLC Temporary and Conditional Permit. Request for a two-year temporary and conditional permit for a truck storage area to accommodate 100 trucks approximately one acre in size on property located at 542 King Street, GC and RR Zones. This is continued from July 27, 2021. Number two, Application 21-33P Tregalia Storage Lot. Request for a two-year temporary and conditional permit, Section 2.13. A, to allow a storage lot for vehicles, boats, campers on property located at 15 Edwin Road I Zone. To view this meeting, please tune into Channel 16 if your provider is Cox Cable or go to Copies of the application are on file in the office of the town clerk and/or planning department and online at https://www.south windsor CT.gov/Planning-Department/pages/ Planning and Zoning Commission applications. At this hearing, interested persons may be heard by calling into the meeting and written comments by the public will be received by mail or email. Persons who may require an accommodation can contact staff Monday to Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM at 860-644-2511, extension 329. Bart Passakon is Chairman, Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we're missing a few commissioners, so I'm going to ask Commissioner Cavignero to sit for Commissioner Bonzani and Commissioner Powell to sit for Commissioner Dexter. Okay. Our first public hearing is the continuation of the Hartford Truck Equipment LLC. Do we have somebody here to represent the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Peter Alter. I'm a lawyer, practice law in Glastonbury, the firm of Alter and Pearson. Also tonight with us is Peter DiMali, Design Professionals, our project engineers, as well as Blake and Derek Brannon, who are the owners of the applicant Hartford Truck Equipment. At the last public hearing, we presented to you our request for a temporary and conditional permit to park vehicles in an area within the commercial zone that exists along Route 5, John Fitch Boulevard. And we acknowledge that due to circumstances that were caused by a lack of supply chain materials coming forward for truck outfitting, Hartford Truck had been inundated with new vehicles, which they were forced to store in an area to the rear of their currently existing and developed property in the area indicated by Peter DiMali on the plan that's displayed. That area has been surrounded by a fence that has a green screen attached to it, and we provided the commission with a number of photos of that as well. You then heard from neighbors who had expressed some concerns. There is a residential zone along King Street and houses that are fairly proximate to the Hartford Truck Equipment property, the nearest being the Usello property and the property to the north towards McGuire Road.
Sir, I am listening.
The proposal is to allow that truck parking to continue for up to two years in accordance with your regulation and to, in the meantime, our plan with the company is to come back to the commission with a more permanent plan for the development and use of the property. The neighbors and our clients, the Brannons, have been meeting on a pretty continuing basis, and there's been an excellent dialogue. The Brannons have reached out to neighbors to try to understand their concerns. And as a result of that, the concept of creating a berm to further screen the property was suggested at the commission's last public hearing session. Commission asked that the public hearing be continued in order to provide greater details as well as staff review of the proposed berm. Yeah, we can go to the berm, thanks. We have presented to your town staff a proposal to erect a berm that is 10 feet at its highest point. It would completely follow the fence line between the storage area and King Street and then turn at a 90-degree angle until it meets existing vegetation along the southerly boundary of the fenced area. The berm would start about five feet beyond the fence. It would be 45 feet wide at its base, would be built on a two-to-one slope, and then achieve a height of 10 feet, obviously much higher than the rooftop of any vehicle. Those of you who viewed the photos that we provided before, you'll recall that with the photos, you could see the rooftops of the vehicles above the six-foot fence that already exists. This 10-foot berm would obviously shield the view from King Street completely. We have gone forward with investigating materials for the berm. Mr. Mitchell, Environmental Services in South Windsor, has an ample supply of wood material from which the berm can be constructed. Design Professionals estimates that somewhere in the range of 3,200 cubic yards would be required for the construction of the berm. Yeah, go ahead. And Mr. Mitchell has up to 5,000 cubic yards of the material already on site at his premises and would make it available to the Brannons for a local landscaper, Jay Murtha, to construct the berm. We think that constructing this berm addresses the immediate concerns of the neighbors while the Brannons work on a more permanent plan to continue to be good neighbors to the residential neighborhood on King Street. The, we are aware that there is some concern about ongoing maintenance of the berm. I would remind the commission that we're asking for a temporary permit not to exceed two years so that the berm will not be in place on a long-term basis. I would also indicate that any of you who've had the opportunity to be on the Hartford Truck property, you recognize that Derek and Blake maintain that property at a very high level. It is extremely neat and orderly, and there's no reason to believe that they would not maintain this in the same manner. And in fact, they're prepared to commit to that. Certainly, if the town wanted to have someone inspected, say, in the next growing season to make sure that it was still maintained as it has been presented to you, we would have no problem with that. Our expectation is that we will be back with the neighbors and this commission with a more permanent plan for the use of this property within the time period of this conditional and temporary permit, if it is granted. In the meantime, you would be providing great assistance to a local business that is caught in a supply chain problem with a business that is extremely busy but that has been hampered by a lack of equipment and materials being readily available as it had been in the past. As I indicated, Derek and Blake are both here and can answer questions. Peter DiMali's firm has done the design and we think created an additional element of screening that protects all of the residences that are in the King Street area from viewing this vehicle storage facility. Just to remind everybody, the Brannons have 24-hour security on site. The lot is not lighted, so it causes no intrusion into the neighborhood whatsoever, and it is circumscribed by a fence, six-foot fence already. And all the vehicles within that fence are brand-new vehicles. They're driven in, parked until the equipment is ready to be added on to the vehicles. There's no constant motion or moving of vehicles around in that regard. We're happy to answer any questions and obviously respond to any concerns that the commission has. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we'll turn to our town staff, our Director of Planning, Michelle Light.
Thank you. We did have the submission from Design Professionals, and we did have Walter Summers take a look at it, our fire marshal, since it would be wood chips, and he's had concerns with that in the past. He did go over and inspect the materials and indicated he does not have a specific concern with this material being used. I guess from a staff perspective, the biggest concern we have is, over time, the maintenance of it and it staying 10 feet tall, achieving the screening that it's supposed to do. Just as a reminder to the commission, when you have a buffer requirement, it's a 50-foot on both sides of the zone line, and it's a planted buffer typically, so that would be what you would typically have in this situation. I understand their plan is to do something different over time, but that is what you would have under zoning. So I think, as I recommended in my previous report, a site plan would be appropriate to come in and address not only this is a different lot than the current lot, but also the zoning of it, you know, before a renewal of this permit.
Okay, thank you. I'll turn to our town engineer, Jeff Doolittle.
Thank you. I have no additional comments.
Okay. At this time, I'll turn to the public. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak in favor of this application? Please step forward. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak against this application or have questions or concerns they would like to voice? Please step forward. And I'll remind the public, we usually have a sign-in sheet up on the podium. If you could either sign in before or after your testimony.
Okay, I'll sign in after. My name is Mark Calvres. I live on 500 King Street. To begin with, when they brought this whole thing to our attention, they've had, already started building it. Number one, we went over, you guys went over this last week, the commission went over it last week, where it was already, already had started building it, even though they had no permit to build it. Then their lawyer had mentioned that they wanted to put a berm up, an eight-foot berm. He suggested it on the residential zoned area. And LeBlanc had mentioned, Mr. LeBlanc had mentioned that, no, put it 10 feet from the fence line. I can't understand the reason why, first of all, they would have wanted to put it on King Street side, 10 feet from our property lines. They wanted to put a berm instead of by the fence, which they never fixed the fence, it's still got the rags hanging from it, and they haven't done anything. But anyway, it shows to me that they were, you know, a lot of, something, there was a lot of dishonesty in this. I don't feel that they were honest with the public. They started, they started building without, without the permit. They knew that, they knew they applied for a permit, and then they knew they were working on this while the permit wasn't even approved, so. That, now you're talking about what's it for? They're saying 100 cars. Well, I went to a meeting with them, and they told us that they're going to, they're putting 100,000-square-foot building up there. It's going to look like a barn. But don't worry, the roof will look like a barn, so when you look out the window, it'll look like a barn in the middle of a field. Well, this was at the meeting, had told us this, that's why they wanted to put the 10-foot berm by the property line, not by there. So that's another thing. Now, you got 100 cars parked out there with a two-year, two-year moratorium while they park these cars waiting for parts. If they knew that the parts weren't going to be in for two years, would you brought 100 cars to your lot? I mean, that's just poor business. So that shows me that they didn't have no understanding of how, yeah, we all went through the pandemic. They knew what was going on, and right now, we're in the middle of another pandemic. So what are we going to, wait another two years for this? So we're going to have those cars parked out there forever because that wasn't their plan. Their plan was to put this building. Then they said the building was for parts. Well, if they can't get parts, why do you want to put a building there? They're talking 100,000-square-foot building for parts. So a lot of this was just dishonesty all the way, all the way through. I know they, you know, tried, they talked to us about, you know, the building being just for parts, but if you're waiting two years for parts, what do you need 100,000-square-feet for a building for if you ain't got no parts? And what do you need 100 cars parked in your lot? Why are they taking the cars if they can't fulfill, if they can't fulfill the thing? Why are they bringing the trucks there? Why don't they leave them at the manufacturer, leave them there, say, hey, look, your parts aren't going to be in for six months, so bring it back in six months, and we'll put them in. They got cars sitting there rotten for two years while they wait for parts. Is that business? They're not making no money with the car sitting there. They're not making a dollar on that car. So we're not, that's just wasting time, wasting money, and wasting looks. I don't want to look out my window one day and see a 30-foot building there, 100,000-square-feet, looking at the back of a warehouse, and that's exactly what's going to happen. I don't care where they put the berm. I look at my, out my window on the second floor, I'm going to see a warehouse sitting there. Then, not the problem with that, let's say, how about the fork trucks running in and out? You're moving parts on 100,000-square-foot building, now you got fork trucks running in and out. And pretty soon, you have a garage there, and that's all, this is what this whole thing came down to. They also, well, said, well, what if we don't let you build on this? What if they don't let you build on the zoning? Oh, we'll put houses up there then. We'll put a project up there. Like, that's going to worry us because they're going to put housing up there? That's what they thought. Oh, well, we could put a housing up there. Let them put housing, it's zoned for residential. So I'd rather see, I'd rather see a whole row of houses there than one big barn or warehouse sitting in my backyard. Now, can you imagine what the property values are? Some of you went into the backyard and looking up, there's a warehouse there. This is what it is all about. I don't even think they should even be allowed to put 100 cars on there because of the rule. Number one, like I said, if they didn't know the parts ain't going to be in here for two years, why would you even take the work in? That's a lack of planning. This is a lack of planning to say, oh, we're bringing them in, but we're going to wait for parts. Tell them you can't, you don't have the part, you don't have the time to do it. They don't even have the manpower to do that. Even if all the parts fall on them tomorrow, they still wouldn't have the manpower to get those 100 cars out of here. So two years is not going to be long enough, then they're going to come down and ask for an extension. And the reason they want that berm on the residential side is so now they have an Eastman, you've already allowed construction on the, on a residential zone, why can't we put a building there? Why can't we do this there? You already allowed it. But I don't want to see this turn into what I think it's going to be. There's been a lot of dishonesty, and I think that this should be stopped. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Did you sign in already?
No, I'm going to sign in now. I signed in upfront, but.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who is against or has questions or concerns they'd like to voice? Please step forward. Hearing and seeing none, we will turn to Commissioners. Commissioner Cavignero.
Yeah, just the one thing I was curious about, I mentioned this last meeting we had with the berm in particular, if it were to be done, hopefully. It was about the vegetation of it. Since it will be mulch, I assume as the year goes on, I'm not sure the correct terminology for this, but as it will be maintained, there'll be vegetation there to limit the visibility of it. I just assume that will still be the plan for the berm?
We're not planning to put any vegetation on it or to have any growth on it. It will, it will remain a.
Okay, could you please speak into the microphone?
Our plan is not to have vegetation on it, but to have it be a berm that remains in its state as it was installed. There won't be any plantings on it.
Okay. Let me just refer what I was, refer what I was saying. So since it will be made of mulch over the year, I assume, like we said, it'll be heavily maintained and it will be done for visibility, and like we said, there will be no vegetation. I made that recommendation last time, so I just wanted to make that comment and just clarify, so thank you.
We're in a, you and I are in a, we're saying the same thing, I believe. Thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to confirm, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner LeBlanc.
Thank you. I've seen these up north, and I find that these berms actually work well structurally. They can get rainstorms, and they kind of hold together, being what they are. They're fibrous, and they tend to stay in place. One thing about up north, I'm not sure if it's an issue here, are black flies. Obviously, seeing these up in Vermont, the ski areas use them in the spring, it's pretty obnoxious for a while until it settles. I'm not sure if that's the case in this area. I think it depends on what the blend of mulch is. The other thing is the odor of it. Not sure if that'll be an issue. Again, it depends on what the blend is mulched of, like composting weeds are somewhat vile when you drive by Burgess Road, but some of these mulch plants, depending on what it is, can be the same in what you mulch. If you're mulching branches with weeds and all that in the same context, they become obnoxious for a bit.
If I can, this is.
My clarity on that.
A shredded wood material? It's not vegetation that's been chopped up?
I'm just telling you what I observed up north because I've been on them, parked near them, that kind of thing, so. It's just, I've seen these firsthand, and it's no, and I've seen the flies firsthand, so that's why I'm asking you the question.
Yeah, you might need your microphone, Peter. Are you going to pass that sample around to all the commissioners?
That was taken from the material that Mr. Mitchell has on his site.
All depends what tree they use for it, you know? Thank you, Michael. Are you all set, Mike, or? I see your lights off.
Thank you, I'm all set.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wagner. Commissioner Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, in the last part of the hearing, last, uh, last time we met, um, I asked about what can happen to this, and, uh, our town engineer, Mr. Doolittle, commented that the, uh, material will settle. So, if we build a ten-foot berm, what is the height that you're actually guaranteeing will be maintained throughout the period? Or do you wanna build it to eleven and let it settle to ten? How much is it gonna settle? How do we make sure it's still a ten-foot berm, you know, two years from now?
Our understanding, I don't know if you wanna comment?
I, I don't know if there's a, a good formula to determine how much it's gonna settle. It depends on the material and how fast it decomposes, but we think it will settle probably unevenly as it decomposes, and they will have to maintain that.
So, how often would you recommend that they, um, um, you know, confirm and, and do maintenance on that?
Um, off, I would say twice a year, probably in the spring and the fall.
Okay.
Would be a good idea.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, now, Mr. Calabrese, and I think I got your name right, if I didn't, I apologize, mentioned, uh, buildings. Uh, my understanding is that, at least for this special exception, uh, temporary, uh, excuse me, temporary permit, um, there's no buildings involved. The only thing you're building is this berm out of, out of wood chips, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so, future plans will have to come before us, uh, and...
Microphone.
We're not even gonna discuss those today. And, that's all I had. Oh, I guess I wouldn't like to say that, uh, Commissioner LeBlanc brought up an issue that I'd never thought of, but, uh, uh, it seems to me that if there are infestations of, uh, undesirable species in this berm, um, we should require you to, uh, control those by whatever methods work. You know, whether it's black flies or rodents, or I don't know what could get into the berm, but, uh, uh, we'll perhaps make a condition that that be, uh, that that be, uh, controlled.
I think if the commission is inclined to approve this and adopts Mr., uh, your town engineer, Mr. Doolittle's suggestion about a couple of ye- times a year doing an inspection, that could include an inspection for, um, the kinds of pests or, uh, concerns that, that you raise as well.
Great, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Flag.
Yeah, I, I have the same concerns as, uh, Commissioner Wagner and Commissioner LeBlanc on the, uh, on the berm, and is, are you gonna mix any dirt at all in with this mulch? Strictly mulch, right?
Shredded wood.
Is it gonna be of the, of the same kind of wood, or is it gonna be mixed?
This, the, the sample that you have was taken from the supply that Mr. Mitchell has. It's all of that character. You have photos of his piles, and it seems to be pretty consistent with the sample that we provided.
All right, mulch has a tendency to pack down, and I agree with Commissioner Wagner on this. It's, you can put ten feet up there, but, uh, it, eventually, it can move down quite a bit. Uh, and that concerns me, and also, there is no vegetation and there is chance for, uh, different kinds of, uh, species of insects to, uh, habitat in there and so on and so forth. Uh, my recommendation is, is that, uh, uh, one of the conditions to be set on this is that you have, uh, checked, uh, at least once, uh, every, uh, year, uh, maybe less, uh, by a bona fide, uh, inspector for, uh, um, or like a, uh, orca or something like that, one of those type of insect people to see what's going on in there and, uh, make sure that, uh, uh, it doesn't get away from you. Other than that, why, uh, I've watched your place grow since, oh, ever since I used to bowl at the bowling alley that was there, and, uh, you've done a very good job in, uh, in, uh, bringing that place up, and, uh, I applaud you for that. And, uh, uh, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Yeah. Commissioner Powell.
Yes, thank you. So, I just have one quick comment. So, I find it kind of concerning to hear from the public that there's other plans going on, kind of behind the scenes, like we heard about tonight from Mr. Calabrese. Um, so, this also brings to mind how there were trucks parked in the area in question, kind of before this application was approved. So, just in the interest of the neighbors and the public in general, I would just like to see better communication and transparency in the future with any plans that might be occurring with this building. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, I'm going to ask the applicant, and I'm gonna ask town staff. Are there any other, um, wood chip berms, um, around in town at presently? Uh, we'll look at Mr. DiMali first.
Incidentally, this, this pile has been in South Windsor and Brookfield Street at Environmental Service. So, it's there. Um, the, the only one I'm aware of in town is a...
So, it's, it's already been decomposing for how long?
Well, there's one, I don't know for how long it's been there, in front of, uh, Simmers, Simmons Soccer, I think it is, across from the new firehouse on West Road. There is one along, along Sullivan Avenue, it's very low, they actually are planting arborvitae in it. Um, we wouldn't recommend that, but, uh, there's a low-profile one, I don't know how long he's been there. But, one, one thing about this one, this one will be built by, um, Jay Murtha from Jay's Landscaping. He's using Billy Mitchell's bulldozer, and he'll shape it, and then he'll compact it, uh, professionally done, uh, as per the design. Uh, I think it's gonna be, you know, very compact and very professionally done. Uh, it's gonna be a completely different type of, uh, of effect.
I don't know how much you can compact wood chips, run in them over with a...
Very effectively is what I've been told.
A bulldozer. I, I'm, I'm leery about this because it, it just sounds like, uh, a house of cards.
If I might, Mr. Chairman, one of the things...
Microphone, please.
One of the things we seem to lose track of here is that this is a temporary permit?
Right, and if it was for one year, I would be more favorable for a wood chip berm. If you're gonna do two years, I would rather see topsoil and grass seed on top of it.
We would not, we would prefer not to erect a, a berm out of soil, uh, would, obviously would be a much more permanent development process. Uh, i- if the commission is so inclined as to limit the temporary permit to one year, we have the right to come in at the end of that year and ask for an extension for another year.
And, and you do know that, of course, that that might be denied at that point?
I understand that, but...
Okay.
What I think will happen is that you'll see that, uh, either you were right, or, or we were right, and, uh, that it's not an issue, or it is an issue, and that can be dealt with. We don't have a problem with that, we're confident, based on what we've been told by, by Jay and, and by Mr. Mitchell, and, and through the design professionals' design of this, that it will serve the purpose for which it's designed, which is temporary in nature, and then it will go away. And that, we think, is, is an appropriate way to handle this. If you limit it to a year, that's okay, your regulation allows us to ask for an extension, and I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, that it's in the commission's discretion as to whether to extend or not, and, and we understand that.
Okay. Um... I... I don't have anything else. Commissioners, is there any reason to keep this public hearing open? Town staff? Applicant, you're all set?
We have no further materials to present, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Then, we will close this public hearing at seven thirty-eight, and I believe it's on for action later tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, our next application is application twenty-one dash thirty-three P, Treglia Storage Lot. Do we have somebody here from the applicant?
Do I have to sign in?
Yes, you have to sign in, you also have to cover your nose.
Oh, I didn't sign in, but...
Well, cover your nose, though, please. You know, this, with the mask. Thank you. I, sir, if you're gonna be speaking, you're welcome to sign up here, because this is , uh, the sign-in for our speakers. The back one is contact, contact tracing, so we encourage you to also sign in that, to that one. It just makes it easier if we have an issue.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Pleased to meet everybody on the board, and, uh, basically, uh, I'm here for, uh, storing automobile storage.
Yep, if you could just introduce yourself to...
Storage.
No, if you could introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. Louis Treglia.
Okay.
It's T-R-E-G-L-I-A. Right.
Yep, okay.
Okay. And I guess we'll, we'll start with, uh, uh, basically, uh, screen, screen, screening on, on the property on Route Five. Uh, I had a lot, I had, I had, I had the property...
Maybe about three inches from the microphone, not too much closer, 'cause...
I'm really not used to this.
Yeah, I know, it's...
But it's, I'll get used to it.
It is a fairly new system for us, too.
Thank you. Uh, I, I had the property for forty years, I purchased it from Dick Mellon, and, um, and they stored boats on there for years, and I basically put, uh, storage of cars that we took in on trade, and we just sat them there. And now, uh, I didn't renew the license because I didn't receive anything with, uh, uh, virus going on and so forth, and, uh, and, uh, Michelle wants, uh, said something about some screening, but I put Holly Tone all in the front, that fertilizer, and I'm getting flowers with all, right on Route Five, and other bushes I put it, put there already, because the light company changed, uh, telephone poles, and they threw everything down on the right-hand side, and they killed a few bushes. So, I've been replacing those, and there's no houses around. It's an industrial area, as you know.
It, it does require outside storage to be screened, though?
Yeah, but, but, what I'm using for now, I, I didn't realize I needed all the screening, but, uh, I'll have to put some screening down. But, um, there is, uh, the screening, I, I've been basically using it for, uh, the flowers, they're covering everything. This, the, what, what do you call them? Weeds or overgrown or, it, it, they're growing right on the fence, it looks nice. But, I guess, and the, and the screening is usually green. So, that's where I stand with, uh, excuse me, with, uh, screening. And, um, it's an industrial zone, excuse me, there's no single homes around there, and there's no kids playing, so, that's about it as far as storage. That's what I'm using it for. If there's any other questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Okay, well, if that concludes your presentation, um, I'll turn to town staff. Um, our director of planning...
Let me just, whoops. Yes, the, the screening is, uh, basically, uh, the issue, I guess.
Yeah, and that would've been part of the original approval.
Pardon me?
That screening would've been part of the original pr- approval.
Well, when, uh, Peter...
But, we'll, we'll get to that in a little while.
Okay.
Are you all set for now?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, then we'll turn to our town staff, our director of planning, Michelle Leib.
Okay.
So, this is a request...
Thank you.
Request for a two-year temporary conditional permit for a storage lot for vehicles, boats, and other motorized vehicles on property located, it's actually twenty-one Edwin Road, it got renumbered, the southwesterly intersection of Edwin Road and Route Five in our industrial zone. Uh, this applicant had previously appro- had an approval from two thousand and fourteen, was when he came in for a temporary conditional permit. Um, that permit did lapse in sixteen, I'm not quite sure if a notice wasn't sent or why we didn't, uh, get a renewal on that. At this time, in the last couple of years, it wasn't used too heavily, but we've started to see more activity, and that's kinda why I thought to check about the permit in the last year. So, uh, we did notify Mr. Treglia that he does need to apply and come back in front of the commission. Uh, the original storage plan layout, which is the same plan he submitted for this time, was prepared by J.R. Russo, I think you have eleven by seventeen of that plan. You know, at that time, there was some catch basins that were supposed to be, uh, looked at, um, periodically, and, you know, sandy soils out there, so the thought was that it would drain, uh, very well, but there was some landscaping and some slats that were shown on that plan that were to provide the screening. Uh, any landscaping that was put in, um, I think has since died out there, and I don't believe there's any privately slat. So, again, outdoor storage does require to be screened from public ways, this is both visible from Route Five and Edwin Road, so we would be looking for some kinda landscape plan to address screening. Um, I think there, the layout, and, and we have some pictures, I think we just submitted to you, I guess a little bit of the concern I have is the maintenance of the property, again, for outdoor storage, the plan was, kinda gave us the thought it'd be nice and orderly, and I think we're, we're seeing, you know, that's not, with the way that, uh, cars are being stored and they're, they're not really maintained, um, as I guess maybe we wanna see it maintained. The wording of the temporary conditional permit regulation is that temporary conditional permits may be granted by the commission for a period not to exceed two years. Such approval may be given after a public hearing if, in the judgment of the commission, the public convenience and welfare will be substantially served, and the appropriate use of neighborhood property will not be substantially or permanently injured, and traffic and other hazards will not result from such use. Renewals can be granted without a public hearing. This application's approved, there are no other branding modifications. Sorry about that. I do have one other thing I'd like to read into the record, and this is from Mary Huda, the town assessor. With every application that comes into town, we notify all town departments for any concerns or questions they have on the application, so I'd like to read into the record her comments. Michelle, this is dated, um, April sixth, I'm sorry, August sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. With respect to our phone conversation on Wednesday afternoon regarding the application before your commission for storage of vehicles, boats, and campers on property located twenty-one Edwin Road, using NIRVAP as the resource, staff has indicated that in the spring of twenty twenty-one, there are approximately eighty-four vehicles, several boats, and a couple tractor-trailers on site. This assessor's office has not to date received any personal property deck relations for these presumably unregistered motor vehicles stored at this location under the current temporary conditional permit. The owner of the property is required by statute to file with the town annually, and will be sending a declaration form to the real property owner September twenty twenty-one for the twenty twenty-one grant list so that they can accurately declare the personal property located in South Windsor. Please advise if any of these changes with the temporary conditional permit renewal. Mary Huda, assessor for the town. And that's staff comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, I'll turn to our town engineer, Jeff Doolittle.
Uh, I have no additional comments on this application.
Okay, thank you very much, Jeff. Uh, and at this time, we'll turn to our, uh, before we do that, I'm gonna ask the public, uh, because this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak in favor of this application? Please step forward. Not seeing anybody. Is there anyone who would like to speak against or have questions or concerns, they'd like to voice? Please step forward. Hearing and seeing none, we'll turn to Commissioners. Commissioner, ah, I'm, I'm having a... Powell, thank you.
I have no comments at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Flag.
Uh, I'd like to see a better job of the landscape, and, uh, it looks a little, uh, unmanageable down there right now. And it is right on Route 5 where everybody can look into it. And just a little bit more uniformity would make it look quite a bit better. Or some landscaping around it. That's about all I have.
I understand. Okay, Commissioner Wagner.
I mean, one of the objectives in our, in our plan of conservation and development is to improve the appearance of Route 5 and that whole corridor. This site is not kind of living up to that standard. And this is an opportunity for us to make sure that we get the screening we need. You know, you don't have any screening there now, other than a couple trees here and there. I guess I have a serious concern that we're not getting adequate screening. And I guess I'll let town planner comment on whether you think that the proposed plan will achieve that objective. Michelle, that was directed at you.
What was your question, Steve?
Do you think that their proposed plan will do a better job of screening than we're seeing in these pictures?
Well, again, the proposed plan goes back to 2014. So, I really think we would need a current proposed plan. Because the plan that was submitted goes back to when they originally came in. I don't know if that is their intent, to provide the slats or not. So, you know, maybe an approval condition where an updated landscape plan comes in, and we bond it, or something along those lines, to me would be appropriate. Because I just don't know from this 2014 plan if that's the intent of the applicant. Because it's, he just used the old plan.
Yeah, I mean, they seem to be pretty far apart, the trees on John Fitch Boulevard on this plan. So, you think, you think that the slats in the fencing would...
I think a combination, again, Route 5, we're trying to upgrade. So, I think if we just put slats along Route 5, it's not going to be very aesthetically pleasing. So, I think a combination would be appropriate. And I think the plan originally called for a combination. But again, I don't think slats were ever put in, and the trees have since died.
Okay, well, that's all I have for questions. Thank you.
Commissioner LeBlanc.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, I'm in agreement with certainly Commissioner Flag, Commissioner Wagner. It's one of these things, I'm looking at these photos, and it just seems like one of these lots we had as a kid, you know, growing up in a couple towns away, that we used to go in and sneak in and do all those things kids do. But it has a haphazard look. Back when I grew up, the cars from the 50s and 60s sitting out there, and we used to, you know, never mind. It's a long story. But I'd like to see it, neater parking of vehicles. Certainly, if it's not going to be maintained, slats in the fence would go a long way. Commissioner Wagner brought up the whole issue about Route 5. And yes, we'd like to see that road improved as time goes on, and that would certainly help it. Whether the slats are PVC. Right, the interlock between the, you know, the chain link fence. And of course, that has to be maintained, too. Sometimes they do break in cold weather and things like that. So, when those things deteriorate, they should always be maintained.
They're doing, putting gas lines in right on Edwin Road. And there's a lot of construction going on there. They're all marked out with the yellow and white markings. And I guess they're going to dig up the side all along there.
Okay.
But I understand what the car...
Understood. They're just trying to keep the...
Straighten it out, right.
Okay, no, I appreciate that, and that's really what we're looking for.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cavner?
Yep, I just have a clarification. So, I was reading the paper that we got that is dated 7-24. And it has something in there about maintaining the basis of property. And I will quote, replant dead bushes and keep things in an orderly fashion. I'm not sure if my eyes deceive me, but in that first photo, I see a dead bush. Well, it looks like...
But you should go by now. There's new ones in there.
Excuse me, excuse me. The commissioner is speaking. Please let him finish.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And then he'll ask you a question.
I didn't realize that.
Yeah, so it looks like the grass is maintained, as in it is mowed. But as Commissioner LeBlanc pointed out, the cars are not in orderly fashion. It hasn't looked like they've moved in a long time. If you look at the grass length near the cars, much, much higher than the current height of the grass when it's cut. I just want to know if the property will be maintained, like in a more orderly fashion than it currently is.
Yes, it will be.
And that will include properly parking the cars and making sure the entire property, the rest of the lawn is cut, rather than just going around the cars, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Are you familiar with this existing conditions plan for your application back in 2014? The landscape plan? Are you familiar with this?
Yeah.
Yeah, we gave you a copy of it fairly recently, so yes.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that. I have that.
Okay.
J.R. Russo did it.
Yep. Is this your intent to make these changes? Which... Michelle, does, yes, this does have privacy slats?
Yeah, it shows slats along Edwin Road. It shows it going up a little bit, the western property line.
And it shows...
It shows arborvitae primarily along the front edge.
On, yeah, on Route 5. So, that is what your plan to do on this is?
What's that?
I'm sorry? That is what your plan to do on this lot is? Because, to be honest with you, this was approved in 2014.
Right.
And as far as I can tell, it doesn't really look like this was planted, that this ever was gonna really happen. So, it really gives me a lot of concern. And again, I'm not willing to do a two-year temporary and conditional permit. I am willing to give you one year to get this to where it should have been back in 2014. And then, at the end of one year, if it's not, then everything should be removed from the site. And it goes back to an empty lot with a fence around it. So, that's what I'd like to move forward as. Because, you know, I don't see us as a viable option, giving you another two years and nothing happening.
I put those, go ahead. Are you, can I talk?
Yeah, please do.
Yeah, I put new, I put new bushes in, in the front. The state of Connecticut came in there, and they were parking their trucks there, emptying salt. And they killed the bushes. And I bought, and I bought the trees from Patrici's Nursery. If I gotta get a canceled check, I will. There was new trees in there.
Okay.
They're in the front. They were in the front.
The whole thing about landscaping is, if it doesn't get watered, it dies. If it's not maintained, it dies.
Yeah.
So...
Sure, I understand.
You know, going by and looking at the pictures, nothing has been kept up there. So, if we give you one year to get this in shape, do you think you can do that?
I'll try. I really will. I've been working on it now. You can buy there now. I got new arborvitae in the side there, and, you know. And then...
Well, and just to focus for a minute. It's showing arborvitae on the Route 5 side. It's got, I'm guessing probably a couple existing bushes over there. And the slats on Edwin Road's side, okay?
Actually, I think the slats go the whole perimeter. They go, they go along the front.
Okay.
I see them on the southern end, too.
That, that makes sense.
Yeah.
That's where they are.
Okay.
But...
So, that sounds like a plan that'll work for you?
I can tighten up there and straighten it out, you know, more. But also, there's individuals coming by from the, because it's all industrial. They're throwing their beer cans out on the side of the road. It looks like it's horrible. And I'm over there picking up glass, and then you got the doggy daycare center next door. And people are running in and out with those dogs. They're going to cut their feet. They should have a sign up. Well, anyway.
Okay, so...
Do that.
We're going to focus on this?
Yeah, we're going to straighten it out.
Okay.
Okay.
So, commissioners, any reason to keep the public hearing open? Commissioner Powell?
So, I'm not sure if it was mentioned, but what exactly do you have these cars for? These vehicles, what do you do with them?
Well, they're storage, cars that my son and I take in on trade. And we store them, and they're basically for storage. That's it. They're not, they're not running automobiles. There's bad motors or whatever. I mean, it's storage, you know? And that's what Dick Mellon, Dick Mellon had for years. He was a Sea Ray dealer, and he used to store boats there. And not just storing automobiles. That's basically it.
That brings to light a good point, Commissioner Powell. That now this is starting to sound like a junkyard to me.
Not really. We're not in the junk business.
All evidence to the contrary, sir. I did look at the pictures. These, the way these cars are parked, they're not moving. It's not like you've got them out there for resale or anything else like that. These are just sitting there.
Right.
I don't see a plan, you know? What, what's the purpose of these cars sitting here? Is it just storage? What do you plan on doing with these cars?
They're there for storage. And then, basically, we call up an individual with a virus going on now. They want, you know, they're taking these cars for scrap, you know? And there are some parts we need for an automobile, we take off. And we put them on our automobiles we're trying to wholesale. I'm in the wholesale business.
I'm just having an issue with this because I, I know it's, I don't believe it's your intent. But this really does sound like a used auto parts junkyard.
I'm not in the junkyard business. We don't sell any parts. You have to have a license for that.
I mean, right now, there's, I guess, this picture showing like 80 vehicles. And I believe the letter, it was from the assessor's office, is asking that taxes be paid on all those vehicles.
Yeah.
I think you've got your work cut out for you here.
I'm used to work. I'm used to it. You know, I'll just try and straighten it out.
Okay, so you're good with us giving you one year to get this all straightened out?
Yeah, give me enough time.
Awesome.
Chairman, we do have a definition of junkyard in your regulations. If you'd like me to read it just for the record.
Please.
It says, "Any place in or on which old metal, glass, paper, cordage, or other waste or discarded or secondhand material which has not been part of or is not intended to be part of any motor vehicle is stored or deposited."
What was that last phrase here?
It says, "Which has not been part of or is not intended to be part of any motor vehicle is stored or deposited." 10-5.
10-5. You're speaking into that microphone. It's off, Steve.
So, Mr. Chair, may I...
Commissioner Wagner?
Yes. So, I'm reading the definition. It happens to be on page 10-6 for motor vehicle junkyard. Is that what this business really is? The way you see it being operated?
You want to go ahead and read this, just so that I don't know if the applicant knows what we're reading here?
Yeah, please do.
So, this is junkyard, motor vehicle junk business. "A place of storage in any business, whether in connection with another business or not, which has stored or deposited two or more unregistered motor vehicles which are no longer intended or in condition for legal use on public highways. Or used parts or more vehicles, or old iron, metal, glass, paper, cordage, or other waste or discarded, or secondhand material which has been a part or intended to be a part of any motor vehicles, the some part which, the sum of which parts or materials shall be equal in bulk to two or more motor vehicles." I think the first part of the definition does describe what we heard tonight.
I suspect that not all these vehicles are conditioned for legal use on the road at this time. Is that correct? So, let me ask the second question. I was trying to find the reference where it says, "What kind of uses are allowed in this zone?"
Well, it's a permissive regulation. If it's not shown in your regulations, you would have to determine it's an acceptable use. So, if it's not in the use table, then it's not permitted unless deemed permitted by this commission.
Which...
Where is the use table?
Oh, table 4.1, I'm sorry.
But typically, a T and C permit, temporary and conditional...
You're kind of outside of the box with what you're...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is for anything that is not in our regulations.
That's kind of how you get around alone.
So, I... I'm not envisioning a junkyard or a motor vehicle junkyard for Route 5. So, I'm hoping at the end of the year, when you come back, that we can either have a new application to look at that would fit the industrial zone without having to do a temporary and conditional permit. Okay? Okay, so Commissioner Wagner?
Yeah. I'm guessing that this is actually pretty complicated for you. So, I would strongly encourage you to work with our town planner and make sure that you understand everything that we're talking about here. Including what's really expected of you in terms of getting this site up to where it's attractive enough to be on our Route 5. And I guess that's just all I had to say at this point.
Okay. Commissioners, is there any other reason to keep this public hearing open?
Yeah, there's one last thing for me. I know we mentioned putting slats in the fence and all that. Just keep in mind that the slats have to be maintained, that they do get damaged in the weather. And it's one of these things, if you choose that route, we're going to expect that those slats and the look of the fence is maintained and it's consistent.
You mean, the little screening up?
Right, little sleeves that go between the chain link of the fence.
Oh, all the chain link has to be painted?
No, no. You have an open chain link fence, and we're seeing all the cars inside, just looking at the photo. just looking at the photos that I've seen. Am I right?
Say it again, Michael.
There's parked cars that are haphazardly parked out there. So if you choose to clean up the site by putting slats that block your vision through the chain link fence.
Right, right, yeah.
That has to be maintained. It's one of those things that they get damaged in the weather, and.
Yeah.
Having a damaged slatted fence looks almost as bad as not having one. All right, so that's where I'm going with this. If you do choose that route, that does need to be maintained. You may have, may not get any damage, but when you do, the expectation is that it's maintained so it looks proper.
Right.
That's all.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much. Michelle, any reason to keep the public hearing open?
No, I'm off that, thank you.
Okay, okay.
Very much for listening to me.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Um, so we'll close that public hearing at eight oh eight P M. And let me just pull up my agenda here. Okay, so now, um. I will open the public hearing, or, I'm sorry, the regular meeting of the planning and zoning for Tuesday, August seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, our first item on our agenda is public participation. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on something that is not on our agenda tonight? Please step forward. Hearing and seeing none. I'm just talking slowly. Our first item of business is application twenty-one dash thirty-two P, the shops at Evergreen Walk. Do we have someone here to represent the applicant? Okay, um, yeah, after the presentation.
Thank you, Michael.
Gotta blame it on me, I didn't tell everybody to silence their phones. Ten-page cart management plan. Ten-page cart planet, management plan. I'm gonna just get the, all these carts.
We don't wait to see words, yeah.
Yeah, we need to bring that to it.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. In the interim, why don't we, um, why don't we get started? Good evening. My name is Karen Johnson. I'm with Charter Realty and Development. We're here tonight on behalf of property owner P Jum. We have been retained to manage, lease, and handle all the redevelopment activities with the Promenade Shops at Evergreen Walk. We are also the managers for the Evergreen Walk, uh, master, sorry, Master Association. We've been before you on a few occasions, one for a text amendment and another for modification to the general plan for Evergreen Walk. And each time, we've, I think, progressively shared with you more information about our project and our tenant. But for this evening, we're here just to specifically talk about site plan application for the proposed Whole Foods, which is a forty thousand square foot building, plus, I wonder if I'm too close to that, plus ten thousand square feet of retail. So, um, what we'd like to do this evening is really go through with all of our presenters and talk about how we are consistent with your Buckland Road Gateway Development District, um, and specifically, section four point two point three, which outlines the general concepts for this zone. Obviously, I think from our prior discussions, and I, I do see some new commission members here this evening, from our prior discussions, you know that we are essentially removing existing buildings that total about fifty-three thousand square feet and replacing it with a fifty thousand square foot building. We're keeping the footprints of the building essentially the same as it is now. The parking orientation is essentially the same. And in some cases, what we're actually doing is pulling back the development, pulling the development away from a wetland area. And, uh, tonight, we have Dave Gagnon from Langin, who will talk about the site, uh, site plan issues, grading and drainage. Also, Joe Avini from Langin, that will cover the lighting and landscaping plan. John Plant, also from Langin, will cover traffic. And what you haven't seen yet is the proposed architecture. So Tom Barker from Amenta Emma, a local firm based in Hartford, will go through the architecture. And we did receive a positive recommendation from the Architectural Design Review Committee on July twenty-second. You haven't seen a formal presentation on that yet. You've seen sort of the overview of the general plan, the site plan concepts, but not the architecture. So we're very excited about that, but we're gonna leave it till last. So obviously, as you know, the proposed use is as a grocery store. We've also submitted some details about a cart management plan, which I know you're just receiving. Essentially, it's, just outlines the fact that carts will be stored within the vestibule of the building. We can go over that when Tom goes into a little bit more detail on the building plans. We have cart corrals within the parking lot, and we have, um, a schedule, and frankly, and what I would call more of an operations plan, um, from Whole Foods as to how that's managed. So if you have any questions, we can, we can cover those at the end, but right now, I just want to turn it over to Dave and talk about the site plan issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Give me a moment, let me get this projector set up. Okay. All right, we got it. And, uh, for the record, my name is David Gagnon, a civil engineer with Langin Engineering. Um, and you have a copy in front of you of this slide, so presentation, if you want to follow along. Okay, as, as Karen mentioned, um, the site is located at Evergreen Walk. It's a two hundred and forty-three acre development, uh, located in the Buckland Road Gateway Development Zone. The focus of this application is Unit Two. Um, in the rendering in front of you, you're seeing the northern section of Unit Two, uh, which is roughly seven acres of disturbance. Currently, right now, there are two buildings, uh, which we will be demolishing and replacing. As was mentioned, there's two buildings totaling roughly fifty-three thousand gross square feet. Uh, there was a, an Old Navy, Secure Gardens, and formerly, uh, the Highlands Market. To replace those two buildings, uh, we are putting in a retail development of roughly fifty thousand gross square feet. Uh, you could see that on the northern section of the rendering. There will be, uh, an inline retail building, which is roughly ten thousand square feet to the west. And to the east of that will be our proposed forty thousand gross square foot grocer. I want to go over a few of the project highlights, and then we'll get into a few more of the specifics. From a traffic improvement standpoint, uh, just briefly, we are terminating Evergreen Way at the Roundabout. We are creating a continuous north-south connection through the entire plaza by the newly named Cottonwood Lane, um, and that's on the east side of the grocer, providing connectivity through the site. And on Buckland Road, um, to help, uh, improve traffic, um, situation, we are adding a right-turned lane, uh, into the site. That'll be southbound Buckland Lane, taking a right onto Hemlock. Just from a, a site design, uh, perspective, the main parking field will be, uh, just south of the shopping plaza. Uh, there's roughly three hundred and fourteen parking spaces. Uh, there's a secondary lot to the west side of the parking lot. Uh, within this parking lot, we're adding, uh, eight electric vehicle parking stations. Um, those are on the right here, uh, that's consistent with your regulations. And one of those electric vehicle charging stations will be handicap accessible. There'll be three main access points to the parking lot, um, to the east off of Cottonwood, to the west off of Hemlock, and there'll be a one-way in off the Roundabout. Um, there'll also be a secondary entrance off the, uh, backside of the site. As far as, uh, loading, the loading is situated, uh, behind the building. It'll be fully screened with an evergreen, uh, screen wall, which we'll get to a little more detail from our landscape architect on the west. Similar location to where it currently is for the, uh, two existing buildings. As far as pedestrian connectivity, uh, we're providing sidewalks throughout the entire plaza. Uh, we're trying to provide connectivity to the independent living complex, um, through a sidewalk here, sidewalk over here, uh, continuous sidewalk all the way up Cottonwood Lane, finds connectivity on the east side of the site through the plaza. Uh, it'll also provide connectivity to the Panera and a number of sidewalks through the plaza that, um, accesses the rest of the site. Uh, from a stormwater perspective, we are reducing impervious coverage on site. Um, a number of stormwater features we're incorporating, um, low-impact design, rain gardens. Uh, in, in every landscape island that we could, we added a rain garden. And at every discharge point, we're adding a water quality unit. And I just want to show you a really quick, um, access as far as, uh, loading goes. There we go. So loading will, uh, this is the truck route for loading to the loading area in the northwest corner of the site. Access will be off of Buckland. It'll take Hemlock, take that first right to the loading area. There will be a spin circle, and they'll leave, uh, where they came in. So with that, I'll pass it off to our landscape architect, Joe Avini, to go over, uh, landscape and lighting.
Uh, good evening, my name is Joe Avini. I'm a landscape architect with Langin. Uh, just to start off, I'll be speaking a little bit about landscape and lighting, but our overall theme in both that and the general site is to really maintain a consistent theme with the rest of Evergreen Walk. Beginning with planting, all plantings will be native, adaptive, drought-tolerant, and salt-tolerant species. And we're choosing those based on really the observed success of similar plantings elsewhere. That was pretty critical in the role of, uh, choosing what to plant in this location. In the actual parking lot, we're providing shade trees to reduce the heat island effect and, uh, low native grasses and grasses and other shrubs within those rain gardens. And then around the perimeter of the site, we're proposing additional shade trees that maintain a pretty consistent rhythm with what's installed elsewhere down the promenade. As we move to the west, as, uh, Dave mentioned earlier, we're proposing an evergreen screen, uh, adjacent to the loading dock. And then in the northeast corner, we have intermittent stream and buffer plantings. And those consist of more native shrubs, as well as a native seed mix, which will include native grasses and pollinator species. Uh, moving on to the next, if you don't mind going to the third page of this presentation. Uh, additional improvements include the proposed entryway at, uh, Buckland Road and Hemlock Avenue. And that includes two low knee walls, um, and those will be stone veneer walls. Uh, two low knee, knee walls, which are stone veneer, and that's to match the, uh, existing signs on either side of that entryway. And that, and we'll also be, uh, providing some low native grasses, which will match what is elsewhere on the, uh, entryways off of Buckland, uh, going down into Evergreen Walk. Uh, lastly, we'll be proposing three pedestrian-scale fixtures, and that sort of leads us back into the lighting aspect. Uh, if you go to the next page, just to talk a little bit about lighting and continuing with the theme of Evergreen Walk, um, all these fixtures will be LED fixtures. It'll be, uh, there's a couple different types. Uh, it's parking lot fixtures, and pedestrian are the main site fixtures out here. And, uh, those parking lot fixtures will be twenty-five foot, uh, foot height, which is the same as what's out elsewhere. And then around the perimeter of the parking lot, near the wetlands and off the property, we'll have a twenty-foot height mounting height, and that'll all have houseside shields just to keep that illumination on the site. Uh, pedestrian fixtures will be provided at the existing Roundabout, uh, similar to what's there today. And additional, uh, parking, or additional pedestrian fixtures will be in the front of the grocer, and that's similar to what's out in L L V and in other sites. And again, just to maintain that consistent theme. Uh, with that, I will pass it over to John with traffic. Thank you.
So you can flip to your next, next page there. Good evening, my name is John Plant, professional engineer with Langin Engineering Environmental Services. Uh, I'd like to just give you an overview of the comprehensive traffic study, uh, that we looked at, uh, for this project. What you see up here on display, uh, on the screen is, is an overview of the entire development and the, the connectivity throughout the development and, you know, with the proposed, with the proposed development, as well as the Costco that's under construction right now. So we can see our, the project we're talking about right here in the center. And you see the different color-coded, uh, circulation roadways within the development, providing that north-south connectivity. And the, the renamed Cottonwood Lane, uh, providing that, uh, that connectivity through and around, uh, the, the redevelopment of this, this area here. So I'd just like to give you a kind of an overview, this is just a blow-up of that, that circulation, but, uh, an overview of, of the, the traffic study that we did. We, we took, uh, actual traffic counts, uh, in May of, of this year. Uh, we incorporated those into, uh, the Costco traffic study, which was based on the master plan volumes, as well as the Costco volumes that replaced the square footage. We took that same approach with this development. Instead of just counting it towards, uh, retail square footage, we, uh, accounted for the forty thousand square foot grocer as its own entity with separate trip generation. That's, will be a little bit more than if it was just straight retail. Yes, there was a grocer there before, it was a little smaller, but we wanted to, to kind of overestimate and be conservative in how we, how we looked at this. So we combined, uh, the background traffic that was used in the Costco study, the, the master plan, whole entire master plan volumes, plus the Costco volumes, plus the volumes from the redevelopment, including the grocer. We also, uh, included, um, after discussions with, with staff, we also included trip generation for the vacancies that exist in Evergreen Walk. Count for what we all hope is, is a resurgence of the center to full occupancy. Uh, and when we took these counts in May, the facility was about sixty-one percent occupied, so we adjusted those volumes, those counts we took, up, uh, to reflect ninety-five percent occupancy. So we, we took those volumes and we looked at the exterior, uh, the public roadways, you know, Buckland and Hemlock, as well as the interior roadways, uh, on, on Hemlock, Cottonwood, and Evergreen, and looked at those volumes and, and analyzed those intersections to, you know, to make sure that the existing infrastructure in the relocated Cottonwood Lane could support this development, as well as the entire full build-out of the, of the development. And those results tell us that the case, that there is capacity, uh, in these intersections. They operate at acceptable levels of service, uh, in queuing at these intersections, even the internal intersections, uh, don't interfere with other operations. with other operations or other, other driveways. Externally, the public roadway of intersection of Buckland and Hemlock, we are proposing to add a right turn lane on the southbound approach to allow traffic to flow into Hemlock directly. And that's in, let me just make sure it's in, I think it's, if you, if you go two more sheets here, or three more sheets. Well, this, let me just stop here at this next sheet. This, this, this illustrates the queuing that, that we, we evaluated as the results of the, again, very, we think, overestimation of the trip generation for the entire center. But even using that conservative approach, there's adequate queuing space for the different time periods we analyzed. And then if we look at Buckland and Hemlock, this is just a conceptual plan of that right turn lane that we're adding, southbound into Hemlock. This was a recommendation that came out of the BL study that wasn't incorporated in that project, but we do feel this will benefit this project as well as the entire center and this intersection on Buckland Road, allowing right turns to, to move into that lane and enter into Hemlock outside of the through lanes heading southbound. So I think in summary, when we looked at this, we, we feel we took a conservative approach in looking at what was used originally in the, to evaluate the master plan, those full volumes. I think today, in looking at what the makeup of the center is and how trip generation would be generate, would be developed for a center if it was to come before you today, those volumes would be significantly less than what those are projected. But again, we wanted to stay consistent with what the BL Costco traffic study that came before you not too long ago, and use those volumes. And, and it still indicates that we have adequate capacity and to accommodate those, this, this project, both in the public roadway and internally at the, in the internal intersections. We will be doing, and Dave mentioned, we'll be doing some geometric adjustments to some of these intersections to account for both pedestrian connectivity, pedestrian ramps, truck movements, et cetera, to, to make sure this functions effectively and safely. So with that, I'm, I'm certainly here to answer any more detailed questions, but I did want to give you an overview. It was our conclusion, I think working with staff, was that what, what is being proposed can be accommodated in the existing infrastructure with the adjustments that we're, we're presenting before you tonight. So with that, I'll turn it over to Tom to go through the architecture.
Hey, everyone. My name is Tom Barker, and I'm an architect with Amenta Emma out of Hartford, Connecticut. So I'm going to give you guys an overview of the architectural design of the building and where it stands today. So as you can see here on the slide before you-
You could speak into the microphone, please.
Yes, excuse me. So here on the slide before you is the roof plan. It's a pretty typical low slope membrane roof. We have 24 skylights in there to enhance the overall experience of the customer in the grocer. And we have your usual rooftop units throughout. And those will all be shielded by, by an tall parapet around the edge of the building. So here, you can see the east and south elevation. What we tried to do on the design side for this building was to really take the massing and reduce it to a human scale. So the two volumes, glass volumes that you see were requirements of Whole Foods to not only have a presence from Buckland Avenue, but to define the two entries. So we have the main entry that's to the right and the secondary entry, which is to your left. To further break down the facade, we're introducing punched openings along the front facade, and those are recessed and surrounded by a metal surround, which will offer some shadows and depth. Additionally, at about 13 feet, we have canopies coming out, which will help reduce the solar gain in the summer and also break down the scale even further. For the materials, we're proposing using a mid-toned gray thin stone veneer, and that has some variation in texture and color, so that'll make up the main field of the grocer. Above the windows, we're proposing a wood look product, which will have virtually no maintenance, but add a little bit of warmth. Over on the east side, we're continuing the same architectural language with some punched openings. We'll have, you know, some produce behind this, so we raised up the windows a little bit, but continuing that same material language and then transitioning to a ground face CMU with a joint pattern for the remainder of the east facade. Over to the left of the south elevation, this is going to be the retail portion of the building. So we wanted to make sure that this was distinct from the grocer, but complemented it as well. So for the main material that we're using here, it's a warm white gray brick with some variations. We have the same architectural language of the punched openings with a continuous canopy. And then it's a little hard to read on the screen here, but this is going to be a glass fiber reinforced concrete material, which is a similar charcoal to what we're using elsewhere, but this has a slight variation to it as well. On the west and north elevations, we're continuing the use of brick and the ground face CMU to wrap the corners. And then for a little bit of texture difference, we're introducing painted CMU. And to punctuate sort of this rear facade and to create an inviting entry from Tamarack Avenue, we're proposing to curate a large-scale mural. This right here is just a placeholder that you see, but we're going to coordinate with a local artist to find an image that reflects both Evergreen Walk and South Windsor. That's the end of the architectural.
So thank you for your time this evening. We are here for any questions commission members may have of any of our presenters.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, I will turn to our town staff, our director of planning, Michelle Light.
Thank you. So this is the request for a site plan of development, for the development of a new 50,000 square foot retail building consisting of two spaces to replace 53,000 square foot of the Highland Park and the old Old Navy building. And property located 151 Buckland Road in Buckland Gateway Development Zone. The new building is citing approximately 400 feet from Buckland Road. It'll be primarily accessed through Hemlock Ave., though there'll be several internal access points to the site. The applicant previously received approval for an update to the general plan in November of 2020. At that time of the general plan review, the PCC identified a couple of things to be addressed at the time of the site plan. Specifically, updated signage, road names were clearly identified on site. We are introducing Cottonwood as a new road name with the general plan. A specific attention given in designing landscaping and screening in the western parking lot and truck loading area to provide a visual screening to the residents of the independent living facility, Evergreen Crossing. And third, a traffic study to evaluate impacts of this development on Buckland Road, particularly at the Hemlock Ave., Tamarack Ave. intersections, to ensure there is no adverse traffic impacts from this development. The site plan does reflect the termination of Evergreen Way at the roundabout with the continuation of the relocated Evergreen Way to be known as Cottonwood Lane around the northern perimeter of the new building. Pedestrian access is being addressed throughout the site with perimeter and internal walkways and crosswalks. We'd recommend that either stamped concrete or other treatment be added to the crosswalks, similar to what we see in other areas of Evergreen Walk. Also, section 6.73 requires a bike rack be added with new retail establishments in excess of 15,000 square feet. And if it's on there, I apologize, I did not see it. The new parking area is designed for 314 spaces. Previously, there is 321, so we don't see very much change there. It is including the EV charger-ready spaces as required per our regulations. Parking lot landscaping is being met with 17% interior landscaping. We do require 10%. They're adding additional landscaping around the perimeter of the site, in a wetland mitigation area. In the northeastern part of the site, landscaping changes are being made at the Hemlock entrance as well, removing some invasive trees and adding some additional landscaping there. The site will be lit with similar lighting that we see throughout Evergreen Walk with full cutoff LED fixtures. The lighting in the parking areas will be 25 feet tall. We will see some 15-foot fixtures, pedestrian fixtures throughout the site. Shields will be added to the back of the, the lights in the southern parking lot. Building security lighting will be added as required. They have provided us with the lighting diagram. We were working with the applicant able to reduce the light levels from the first proposal, so I think we have an average foot candle between two and three in most of the parking areas. We appreciate the applicant's cooperation on that. We requested the applicant consider reducing lighting levels in the parking areas at the close of business if, if it works with their business model. The applicant's proposing signage in the front side and rear of the building. The designer view did review these plans twice, July 1st, and then again on July 22nd to discuss proposal. The committee was very pleased with materials that were being chosen and the architecture. They did have the applicant return to the committee to address the rear of the building, and this is where the idea of, of the elevation came back for the facade, that they're talking about having a painted facade. And, and that was well received by the committee. So they forwarded a favorable recommendation to this commission. And according to section 4.210F, the shopping cart management plan has been submitted that was given to you tonight. It's a pretty detailed plan. The reason we have plans is to prevent the accumulation of carts around the site and around the area, and I think it does well to address that. There is no outdoor storage proposed on this site. We really don't allow it in this zone. The dumpsters, I believe, are stored within the building. No rooftop mechanicals that will be visible above the roof line, as shown on the architecture elevation submitted with the application. I would note too, I think the mural on the back of the building is not visible from Buckland Way. I think the, the way that the, the site is, the building is sighted on the property, you won't see it from Buckland Way. Where you're really going to have the view of it is coming down the new Cottonwood Lane as you head towards south on that, on that road. As mentioned, turn radiuses are being widened with some minor tweaks, some intersections for the anticipated truck movements and pedestrians. They are showing a loading area on the western side of the building with a truck turnaround area. This was the area that we did have some concern because the independent living facility is to the west of it. It's about 430 feet building to building. And because of the elevation change, you're probably at about the second floor of the residences when you look straight out at this area though. So they have mitigated that by adding landscaping treatment along that western parking lot. So I think that should take care of that issue. There are regulated wetlands on the site. The applicant did receive wetlands approval on May 5th with the following approval conditions. They're requiring a bond amount of 20,000 for erosion sedentation measures, 20,000 for the installation of stormwater structures, and 10,000 to ensure the establishment of mitigation plantings. And that bond is held for three growing seasons. The site is currently serviced by public water and public sewers. Tony Manfree, Superintendent Police Control, has indicated that WPC approval will not be required as it is similar use to what was previously approved on that site. A traffic study was prepared and presented to town staff, and we did have our VHB consultant look at the study, and we worked with the applicant on some of the concerns that we had and just kind of getting at the numbers that we were all using. Again, our primary focus was on additional traffic on Buckland Road and the impacts of the level of service at those intersections. As presented tonight, they will be adding a turn lane into, southbound into Hemlock, which does alleviate some of the concerns that we had. Police services and the fire marshal have reviewed the plans and do not have any specific concerns at this time. If this application is approved, the planning department has no additional modifications. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This time we'll turn to our town engineer, Jeff Doolittle.
Thank you. Just a few remaining comments. Most of my comments have been addressed. So just a reminder, there's an existing sanitary sewer line that runs between the two buildings that are there now. That needs to be, remain in service because it services buildings to the north until the new sanitary sewer line is connected, which will run around the west side of the new building. So that can remain in service. That's just a phasing thing with our demolition plan. They're going to, they're going to include plans with a final set to secure the site during construction, maintain traffic around the site, as it will be important to maintain traffic around the site for all of the shops in the area and also secure the site. I suggested another sign on Hemlock Avenue for Cottonwood Avenue that would be eastbound traffic, provided a slightly different detail for permeable pavement. I don't know if it was mentioned, there's permeable pavement to the east side of the building, I believe. So I provided a detail we used at one of the schools recently. And the right turn lane on Buckland Road is a good addition. That will require a sidewalk easement because the sidewalk, as you can see, is being pushed out a little bit onto their property. I suggest that sidewalk easement be continued all the way to the northern property line there in the event we need to do an additional widening in the future. And I noted there is a catch basin existing on the corner of Buckland and Hemlock that will have to be relocated and modified for that right turn lane. And there's an inlet to that catch basin on the grass just to the north that can be also modified to accommodate the work there. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we'll turn to commissioners. Commissioner Kavik now?
Yep, I just have a, a list of things. Some questions, clarifications. So with the new lane added for Buckland Road, I was just curious, would it be possible to make it a little bit longer? I'm just concerned, while the traffic reports show there wouldn't be much change in traffic there, I'm just worried if something were to happen and there were to be a backup. I'm just not sure if it would be possible to extend that new lane, have it start a little bit earlier? I'm just curious on that.
So Karen Johnson, we can have Langen address that, but we did look at that. The, the queue length that we're providing is consistent with the analysis. If you had an opportunity to read through it, you saw that we are meeting the queues, and by adding that right turn lane, we obviously help not just that turn movement in terms of level of service, but we also provide a level of service benefit to the whole intersection, including the left turn lane into the Aldi. This is something that was called for as, as a result of the Costco traffic flows, and no mitigation was required as a result of that. So, so we did look at it. The problem is that in order to continue it any farther, it involves extensive utility relocation as well as removal of several large mature trees. So it's really, it's not feasible. You know, at this point, we, we believe that we're providing not just the minimum frankly, but an incredible benefit to that intersection, which our trip generation rates and impact to that intersection is, 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 I mean, the benefit is significantly more than what our impact is, in our opinion.
Yeah, I was just curious on, on that area. That's completely fine. I just know that within the Evergreen area and off of Buckland Road, it's, from, from what I remember, it used to be a single-lane road, and then it expanded, and it expanded again. I'm, I was just looking towards more of the future, if any more development were to happen many, many years down the line. I'm also- I'm also curious about Tamaraque Avenue for the entrances. I'll pull it up on mine here. So I see there's a few entrances. I will say I'm very happy that the roundabout is staying. I was a bit worried about that, but I'm really, really happy that it's staying to mitigate traffic. I'm just curious if it would be possible to add a new, or not a new entrance, but another entrance? Yeah, that one. So Tamaraque Avenue on the top, across from the independent living apartment complex towards the right-hand side of it, I'm not sure if it'd be possible to have an entrance into the Whole Foods parking lot area there, because what I see could happen to stack up traffic is if anyone's on Tamaraque Avenue heading south, they would take a left onto Hemlock, which could stack up traffic even more. I'm just trying to think of a way to mitigate that and split that up. I just wasn't sure if that'd be possible at all.
So there is an entrance in this area, right here, which... If you're talking about an entrance, a proposed entrance in this section, there's a significant grade change here. There's a, I don't even know what the height of that retaining wall is, but that is not possible. I think it's, I don't know. David, is that 20? Yeah. I mean, we're talking about a 20-foot retaining wall on that side.
All right, thank you. One or two other things. So let's see.
Just to be clear, though, that squiggly line will be a road that will be a public road. So I think, I'm not sure if you understand that from that diagram up there, that...
Right.
Right there. That will be a public road with a sidewalk on it, so that will be another way into the...
I was not aware.
Into that area off of Tamaraque.
Into the rear.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I noticed on the presentation, on the very first page, this is more of just, I'm curious about something. If you look at the roundabout in the very first page, and to the right of it, on the bottom lane, there is a, on the paper version, you can see a bit clearer, but there is a very, very, very small QR code. Does that open up anything that we should see? On the paper version of the roundabout on the right-hand side, there's a small QR code. And if you see it on the paper version, I'm just not sure if it opens up anything that we need to see. Yeah, that was, I apologize for that, though. Just an error with our printer processing the PDF, so you could disregard that QR code. Okay, I just wasn't sure. And then I have one more thing, and then just a couple of comments. So on the planning department report, point four, it requires that a bike rack be added. I'm just curious in terms of where any potential locations were for a bike rack and any potential bike racks to be in the future for that area, since I know that is very close to condos and apartments and other living. It would just be very beneficial for people that would walk there or ride their bike there, for example.
Sure. We agree with you 100%, and frankly, I think that was an omission on our end. I didn't have a chance to see the report before the meeting. We will definitely add one, and what we would like to do is work with Whole Foods for the location for it, because it may be possible for us to put some in this area. So definitely.
All right. In just a few comments, and on a positive note, like I said, I love that the roundabout is staying. I love the facade. It is amazing. Great design on the building, can't say it enough. Fantastic work. Thank you so much. That is all I have to say.
Thank you for your very thoughtful and thorough review.
Commissioner LeBlanc.
Thank you. I just have a couple of comments. I have my notes here. I got a pile of paper. Can the top of the roof be viewed from Buckland Road? I'm trying to visualize this, and I'm thinking it can't, but that's something you looked at. The reason I say that is because I know the footer to get lead points and all that typically are like a white PVC roof or a single membrane roof is used. The problem with them is that when you see them from above, after two or three years, they're quite discolored.
Yeah.
And I have noticed that with the rest of the plaza as you drive south on Buckland Road or north, you can see it to your left, and it's kind of unsightly.
I think you might be talking about the southern portion of it, around the LL Bean area. And you're right, you can see those. There's a, there is a tremendous grade change, and the buildings are very close to the edge of the road.
Correct. Recommend a light drive.
In this particular case, and frankly, I'm not sure if I mentioned this, but we've been working with Whole Foods on this since last summer. And one of their hesitations with this location was a lack of visibility. And so we prepared these perspective views to show where it is visible from Buckland. And we had them photograph really all the way down Buckland, well past the site almost to Cedar. And I think you're aware of Lot 5, which I think is coming in shortly for some other development proposal. We have photographs on the open portion of Lot 5, looking back into the site, and you cannot see the existing buildings from Buckland. What we're doing is we're sliding things over a little bit, so there's maybe one corner of the old Highland Market, which you can see because of the cast stone appearance. You can see that, but because of the fact that we're moving it over, we will not be visible from Buckland Road.
So make sure it's considered, that's all. The other comment I have is, I love that painted mural on the back of the building. It's kind of a neat idea, one for the arts. The only problem with that, they're hard to maintain 10, 15 years from now, especially if it's painted on masonry.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if you can use a panel type of application over the side of the building or something that's maybe easier to touch up and paint years later, because it's pretty close to traveling cars, right?
So one of the things that I think would be helpful, and if you're willing to consider this as part of the decision, we would like to fully investigate the best method, because that was one of the concerns, frankly, of Whole Foods Market. There's a lot of new technologies that are available. Frankly, we're constantly getting contacted by advertising companies using murals as a new form of billboard. That's not the intent here. The intent is to work with a local muralist, and we don't know exactly what medium they want, they may want to use. We recently acquired Blueback Square, and we're working on several murals and participated with the town. If you're familiar with that project at all, Noah Webster Walk, and a new mural that was just recently commissioned on the library facade. So that was one particular artist that uses essentially a spray can. Because of the size of this and the location, what we'd like to do is figure out the best way to do it, potentially not be tied to having this complete for a certificate of occupancy, because one of the difficulties may be actually commissioning it, whether it's staging or whether it's panels attached to it. We don't really have a sense of that yet, and we need to, we need to format that project a little bit better.
Yes, a lot of murals get damaged by passing cars through close, just the dust and effect and everything kicking up from years of traffic. You'll see a wear in the bottom of it.
And I think the...
And I'm just looking out years from now.
Totally agree with you, and I think the beauty of doing something like this that is more of an artistic piece is that in order to keep it fresh, we may want to change it. So it might be something that we'd be looking at changing, you know, I don't know how many years down the road. But from our perspective as the landlord, this is part of our building project that we're providing. But we will participate with the tenant. We hope to participate if there's an arts commission in the town. I haven't had a chance to look that up yet, but just figure out what makes the most sense.
And my last comment's a compliment. I've been to many Whole Foods, and I work in Stanford a lot. I eat at the one in Darien for lunch quite a bit, and that store is very, very well-maintained, and it's been there for quite a while.
Yeah.
And, yeah, thank you.
We're very excited about bringing Whole Foods to Evergreen Walk into South Windsor, and it's due, frankly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Wagner.
Thank you. First of all, the Journal Inquirer published a map of the whole project, the whole Evergreen Walk project, and it was pretty exciting to see all the things you have going on there. I realize that's not on the agenda tonight, but it's great to see that there's a long-term plan there that is going to keep this place going and keep it lively. So first of all, there's a, one of these plots shows the new right turn lane, and if you wouldn't mind turning to that. And it seems to show that the sidewalk is ending, is ending right at the turn there.
Right here.
Am I misinterpreting that, or what's going on there with the sidewalk?
Yeah. Dave, you want to, or John?
Yeah, the existing sidewalk, as you can see underlying this graphic screened, is the existing crosswalk paint. That's where the sidewalk ends today. So as we, as we move it, move the, expand the road for the right turn lane, we're just relocating that sidewalk connection slightly to provide for the width of that, that lane add. So the sidewalk ramp is going to be in a similar location as it is today.
All right, but will it continue down Hemlock Avenue or not?
Just to clarify, so there's an existing sidewalk, if you look behind you on Hemlock on the south side. So there's a continuous sidewalk here, which provides connectivity to Buckland. Existing sidewalk goes from north to south this direction. Access to our site is via the south side of Hemlock. So we're maintaining that pedestrian connectivity. We're really just kicking over this sidewalk a few feet, and what you see right here is just the handicap ramp that accesses the crosswalk. So currently, there is no sidewalk on the north side of Hemlock, and that's because there's a number of trees. And there's also, there's a retaining wall over here, and there's a grade change. So the only really location for sidewalk on Hemlock is on the south side, which we're maintaining.
Okay, yeah, that's right. I am familiar with that parking lot, it's in here, so, okay. Thank you for answering that. We were handed the shopping cart management plan, which is the first I've seen of it. I'm wondering if someone would explain that to us.
Sure. I do apologize for getting that in just this afternoon. So the information in the shopping cart management plan specifically exhibits C and D were provided by Whole Foods, which represents a, an existing policy that they implement in all their store locations. It's a safety plan for the team members, and it's a schedule for when the cart sweep is done on a regular basis. And so the vestibule, so there's the two entryways that Tom described earlier, there are vestibules. Let me actually get to that plan here. Here we are. This is a good, this is a good overview. So these are the vestibules, and within the vestibule, you can see there's, we are. Within each of those vestibules, so here and here, this is the larger one, which is described as the main entry. So that's, this is primarily where customers will enter the store, shop, checkout areas are over here, and this is primarily an exit. Of course, they're both entry and exits, but that's the general pattern of the store. So there are vestibules on either side, which have an internal cart storage. And so carts will be taken in every evening. And then on exhibit B, again, we show the site plan, and there are six cart corrals within the parking lot. So there's two here, two here, and two here. And that is where customers will return the cart corrals after they've taken the groceries to their cars. So from a storage perspective, you're looking at internal storage and then parking lot storage. And so these will be cleared out every evening and then brought into the vestibules. And then the additional information that's provided here is just a sample of the cart runs that are happened on a, happening on a regular basis throughout the day by the team members. And then this is just more informational, which shares with you from a safety and training perspective, the information that's provided to the team members in terms of how they are supposed to retrieve the carts on a regular basis during the day, and then different safety measures of how they're supposed to store them and then clean them out. And essentially, the policy is, which is carried in the narrative as well on the front page. So it's, although it's 11 pages, it's really just a page of narrative and a number of exhibits. So from a training perspective, the objective is to make sure that customers have clean, dry shopping carts, and that shopping carts are not taking up parking spaces.
All right, thank you. Now, does the retail location have the potential for using shopping carts as well?
We haven't identified a retailer as of yet, so we don't know.
I think that answers that question. And I do believe that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Flag. The first question I got is, your building is going to be standard, isn't it the same size as all the rest of the Whole Foods stores that you've got, like Glastonbury and West Hartford? It's going to be the same size and layout, sort of?
So the interesting thing about Whole Foods, and I've worked for a lot of different grocery operators, is that there really isn't a standard. Every store is different. And this store is, for example, 5,000 square feet smaller than the Avon store, which is just soon ready to open. It's different than the Glastonbury store, which is a conversion. It's very different than the stores that I shop at near where I live in Massachusetts, because those are also conversions. So every, really every store is different. I've shopped at a number of them, and there is no, there's no same thing. The similarities are, for example, if you've ever been to the West Hartford store, which is a new construction store as well, the similarities are, you walk into the main entry, you have typically a produce area immediately adjacent to that is, you know, health and beauty wellness, then essentially dry goods around the perimeter. You have meat and fish, and then dairy, and then prepared foods. At the end, cheese area around the prepared food. So it's similar in terms of how they lay it out, but some stores may have larger departments than others based on their own market strategy. So we just see, just today, just this afternoon, received the design for that store layout. So it's still being, it's still being massaged.
The traffic pattern that you've got going around there, that's quite a traffic layout, and it ought to be really interesting to see what happens around Thanksgiving and Christmas time around that area, because it is awful lot of stores and things in there, and I, I can't imagine it running too smoothly at that time of the year. But the main thing is, coming down Hemlock, you've got your main opening right at that rotary. Is there a queue going off of that rotary that goes into that store? Because your entrance into your parking lot is right where that rotary is. And there was traffic coming from every which way around that rotary, and I was looking for a diagram that would include the whole rotary and going in there, but I didn't quite see that, and it didn't give much footage around the rotary. That rotary that's there now is not a huge, large rotary. And when you get a lot of traffic going around that rotary right now, it's pretty slow and easygoing. And if you start getting trucks and other things going down there, I don't know. And if you start getting trucks and other things going down there, I don't know. Anyway, I'd like to know if you got a queue going off of that?
Yeah. I think if you look on the seventh sheet, and it's up on the screen here, this is the kind of the queuing of the midday, Saturday midday, which is the busiest peak hour in the center. This shows where the queuing is around the rotary. And this is only an entrance. The drive that you're talking about on the north... on the north side of the roundabout is gonna be converted from a two-way that went through Evergreen Walk to an entrance only. And as you can see, they don't necessarily stop. And your point about traffic slowing, that is the purpose of a roundabout, is to get people to slow down and to be efficient in processing traffic. As you can see in the analysis, it's a level of service A around this. Using full buildout of the whole development, using the Costco numbers, using the Whole Foods numbers, this still operates very, very efficiently in the worst peak hour on an average week during the midday. So, that traffic coming into the center, from Hemlock, say, coming from Buckland into Hemlock, they have a couple of choices. They can take a right onto Cottonwood, and there's a driveway... let me move back here a little bit. Yeah. Let me go over to this one. So, as you're coming in from Buckland on Hemlock, you have a couple of choices. You can take a right and go in a driveway here. If you wanna get closest to the front entrance, main entrance, which is generally with a grocer, people know where that entrance is, and that's why this area of parking lot is larger, because that's more desirable next to that main entrance. Or, you could continue down Hemlock and enter without stopping. But, again, as you point out, slowing down around the rotary, which is good on entering into a parking lot, slower speed as not to be high-speed coming in and interfering with maybe somebody backing out. So, that's why we left no parking in this area to allow for those vehicles to get into a parking lot and realize they're in a parking lot and slow down even further. Or, as another alternative, they could continue through the roundabout down Hemlock in this driveway to get into this parking field, or this parking field for the retailers. Or, you know, a lot of... you'll probably see a lot of the employees parking over in this side outside of the customer area. So, there's three different ways to get into the site from Hemlock. And although it's not encouraged coming up Cottonwood, you can go through this way if you choose. We're not emphasizing that on purpose. We want this to be the movement, and that's why the main entrance to the grocer is here. So, this is gonna be the more desirable movement coming from the north on Cottonwood into the parking lot. So, we have various ways to get in and out of the center. This is only one way in. This one off the roundabout is one way in. And again...
That's true, but, all right, look at the traffic coming out of Evergreen Way that's gonna be going around that circle and going in there. Also, from... coming from Hemlock from the other direction, in case they didn't get in at the top, coming down Hemlock and then going around the rotary completely to get back in that way where your red dot would just was. Are they gonna widen that out at all?
No. That would, I think, defeat the purpose of what that roundabout is for. It's... first off, it's... you mentioned something about trucks coming through there. The Whole Foods, this development, that is not... the trucks will not make that movement. They'll come in Cottonwood into the loading area. But, that is designed for those... that pitched area in the center for truck-turning movements around it. But, for vehicles, it's smaller. It's meant to slow people down, that you're not on a public road that you're trying to push traffic through. In this area, in Evergreen Way, Evergreen Walk, you want people to slow down because of the... with the pedestrians. So, we like that it slows people down. But, we did look at full buildout with this development, with Costco, and in that graphic of the queuing shows that there's more than adequate capacity at this roundabout to handle the volume that's in there, even in the future with full buildout. Even though we think that's an overestimation of the reality of traffic here, but we did double-check that to make sure it worked, it functioned. But, that's a key component of this whole center, of making sure vehicles realize they're not on Buckland Road, they're in a different space, they wanna slow down. And frankly, in here, the more traffic means a good thing. That means the center is successful, and that's a goal, too. So, if people are slow and not moving that fast through here, that's a good thing.
It also could mean a traffic jam up, and people getting a lot more frustrated, too.
Well, again, I think our analysis, we took a very conservative look at the analysis in... of that roundabout, and there is no queuing that causes any... and this is a figure. This, again, is the different colors are different periods from existing to background to a full buildout with our project in green. And you can see that that queuing doesn't happen and doesn't interrupt other driveways or access points. It's very efficient in that roundabout. And that's what it's for. That's why a roundabout doesn't have stop signs, it doesn't stop people, it allows people to continuous movement, but in a slow, safe... safer way. It's... you know, you have a great point. We agree that concern about safety and effectiveness, and I think we've looked at that, and certainly the owner of the facility is comfortable with how this is gonna operate, even with the full buildout of other, you know, pads in this center. That's what we've... sorry. That's what we've accounted for in this analysis. Thank you.
Okay. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Powell?
So, just to echo some of the points made by the other commissioners, I do think that due care was given throughout the whole site plan with the architecture, the landscape, traffic, things like that. I think the addition of the right turn lane was a very good idea. My only question, so, kind of going off what Commissioner Flag was saying about all the entrances, have you considered maybe putting any directional signs or arrows, kind of emphasizing one entrance that you want people to use?
So, that's a good point, and I don't think that you were on... sitting on the commission when we're going through the general plan of development process. And one of the concerns, I think, may even have been Commissioner LeBlanc that brought this up, is some of the internal signage. And really, it's wayfinding. And it's... we acknowledge that there's a slightly different internal pattern here, and so, we... it's really our responsibility to make sure people understand where they're going, so that when they approach something like a roundabout, and they were used to one pattern, and now it's gonna be slightly different, they need to, you know... they need to have some help with that. So, we do have a number of signs. I forget, Dave, what plan is it on? We've got the internal signage plan.
Site plan.
It's on the site plan. Okay. So, we do have a number of signs, and that's critical. It was something that was very clear to us as part of the general plan of development process.
Okay. That was my only question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Reviewing the traffic pattern from the colored... I think it's the seventh sheet, and the queuing length, is that accurate how it's showing the traffic from Buckland coming down Hemlock to Cottonwood Lane? It appears that the queuings are very short.
That's... yes, it's accurate, because though... that movement does not stop, right? That movement, purposefully, is a primary movement that allows vehicles to either go straight through to the roundabout or take a right onto Cottonwood. So, as to make sure there isn't backing up into Buckland, correct?
Right. I understand that. I'm wondering, has the chief of police looked at that? Because I've got concerns with the traffic not stopping coming off of Buckland. I mean, I understand the purpose of why you're doing it, but I have an issue that it possibly creates a safety issue with the other lanes on Cottonwood.
Mr. Chair, that's the way it operates today. We're not changing that purposefully. It's the way it operates today.
No.
Yes, coming down Hemlock.
No. It goes to the rotary.
That intersection exists today, right? We're not changing that intersection, other than now, Evergreen Way, that through movement has moved over to it. But, that intersection exists today.
Right, but...
And that movement is the free movement, as well as the Hemlock going east to Buckland is... and that's why you see those numbers, you know, it's essentially like no... not even a car length of queue.
Right. I understand what you're saying, but the majority of the traffic goes down to the rotary currently, and then either goes north or south, or continues straight.
Oh, yes, correct. Today, the pattern, if they were going north into the rest of the development.
Right. Now, you're gonna have a lot more traffic on Cottonwood.
Correct.
Which we didn't see that much. We saw the traffic from like Panera Bread over there.
Correct.
There weren't as many conflicts. That's what I'm trying to point out. And while I'm talking about that, something that came up in the general plan that I believe Commissioner LeBlanc brought up was the traffic patterns. And I'm looking at it, and I'm estimating that 90% of every vehicle that leaves has to leave past the front of Whole Foods, either to the east or to the west. But, you've got all that traffic from the parking lot going up to the front of the store and going either east or west. And then, on the exit to your west, you've got room for a good, long queue there. But, when you're leaving the parking lot, going either right or left onto Cottonwood Lane, there's really no queuing lane where that traffic is gonna be blocking the lane with the EV chargers. I just see a conflict there, and I don't know if there's a cure for it. I don't think there's a cure for it, but I'm concerned about it. And the actual conversation, we were talking about kind of referred to the parking lot in Manchester and how that gets all backed up. It takes 20 minutes to get out of that parking lot a lot of times. And I know traffic is a good thing for shopping centers and for grocery stores especially, but when you have a lot of conflict in that traffic, sometimes that turns shoppers off, I'm gonna move on to rooftop units. I heard that the rooftop units will be hidden with the parapet wall. How tall are the rooftop units, and how tall is the parapet wall?
Just, Mr. Chairman, just to point one thing out, your concern about that driveway going out onto Cottonwood. We do have a stop sign coming southbound on Cottonwood at that intersection, so they both have a stop. So, that will provide breaks for people to leave the parking lot. It won't be a continuous flow of traffic here, even though Cottonwood is certainly not Buckland, but we have provided a stop there purposefully at this corner to get a different feel, you're in a different space than the through roadway. And then, the queuing, yes, if there's queuing, it may block this drive aisle, but one of the key things is it doesn't block the main entrance to the facility. So, there is a length for cars to back up and to get out, but, you know, that is one of the reasons why we added that stop bar on the southbound portion of Cottonwood, to make that intersection a lot more efficient.
Right. I do see the white stop line on the plan, but I still do see, you know, you constantly having five or six cars trying to exit on that side of the parking lot.
And again, like, as you said, there is another option for customers.
For 1% of the cars.
Yeah.
That's...
As with any facility, people will find an equilibrium that works instead of sitting there and waiting if that's where people are going.
Well, I think there's gonna be a big learning curve for the public, and, you know, getting in the parking lot, and then, I think there's gotta be some education or whatever, or maybe it's just personal experience, but they're gonna have to realize they're gonna have to go past the front of the store to get out.
Depending on where they park. From a few parking aisles, yes, and, you know, if they're on the west side, they just come out there from the aisle and take a left.
If they're on the west side, they're still probably gonna go by one way or another, you know?
Yep.
Okay. Rooftop units.
Hi. Yes, thank you for your question. So, I don't know specifically each individual rooftop unit, however, they were accurate...
All I care about is the tallest one.
Yep, yep. They were accurately modeled in our 3D model, so the elevations that you see in the packet, you can... don't see any of the rooftop units behind it, so we made sure that that was hiding all of them. The parapet in the front of the building is about five feet, and the roof slopes down towards the back, and that's where we located most of the rooftop units, so that it was next to a higher parapet.
So, what's...
So, I don't know the height of the highest rooftop unit, but I do know that when...
How much higher is the parapet than the highest unit? I don't...
I don't have an accurate dimension of that, other than we know that it does for sure cover those rooftop units.
Okay, because I'm hearing these same exact words when Evergreen Walk was built, that there's no way you're gonna be able to see them, yet I drive on Buckland and I can see them. So, I really want some specificity. I wanna know you got this covered.
So, we have a couple of different rendered views here, and these rendered views are based on two important data points. One is survey elevations of the view line from Buckland. This is a photograph of the existing condition, and then, a model was built based on the proposed grading plan. So, we use this company called Tangram. They go out, they take photographs. Then, we have the surveyor go out and do elevation points of exactly where those photographs are taken from. Then, they use Langen's proposed grading model in the system, and then, they use the CAD files of the building design. And so, as Tom pointed out, this is their CAD file from Amenta Emma, and this is a perspective view from Buckland Road.
Okay. What height off the road?
Pardon me?
What height off the road? I mean...
It's an individual standing, taking a photograph, an actual photograph.
So, say, at six foot in the center of the road or whatever?
Right.
I'm just wondering, the elevations of Buckland to the north and to the south? south.
So the fir-, excuse me, the first view is from the intersections, you can see, uh, the two striped lanes, so they're on the other side of the road at this point. Obviously, this is the existing Panera, um, and then this is, again, same method, where they build a model based on the proposed grading and, uh, the architectural files.
Yeah, but they don't have the, uh, rooftop units figured and all that. I wanna make sure that those are not showing.
Sure, they, they do.
I, I've seen renderings before, and some of the same stuff was talked about when, and, you know, just saying, okay, from this one spot, you can't see them. I just wanna make sure if I'm a hundred feet or two hundred feet north on Buckland, I'm not gonna look over and see those rooftop units, or if I'm.
Right.
Few hundred feet south of, uh, this store, that I'm not gonna see those rooftop units.
Right. You know, interestingly enough, and I, I noted this previously, uh, we took hundreds of photographs all around this site, and this is really the most visible one, which is when you're on Evergreen Way, looking directly at it. Um, the, the remainder of the, of the images really are, are not visible. So we have, we have three visibility points. Obviously, the most prominent is from Evergreen Way, you're coming from a lower elevation, um, this grading is changed slightly, so again, your view line is looking over the top of the, of the facade wall. On the side view, oops, on the side view, again, you're looking, this is, this is the top, but you're looking over it, and then, uh, the view, sorry, the view from, uh, the intersection at Buckland, over, and, and as I mentioned earlier, we looked at the view for the rear facade, and from Buckland, that is not visible.
Maybe a point of clarification, are, does the CAD model reflect all of the rooftop units accurately?
It does, it does, and I, and I'll say.
The CAD model, this was all based on the CAD model being processed by a computer.
Yeah.
And building a 3D rendering, and if the rooftop units are accurately modeled in the CAD, then.
Could you go back to that?
They should show it, right?
Over here, where would the rooftop units be here? I, I don't see a parapet wall over here.
Right.
So, I'm thinking there's gonna be rooftop units that can be seen from over there.
We didn't model that perspective, um, so this is, this is a parapet wall, and then these two, these two elements here are, right here and here, are the facade towers here.
Okay, go back to that other picture.
Those are roof scuttles, right, in the back of the building, all spill out, yeah, boxing to the downspout now.
Scuppers or whatever.
It's just below it, it captures it and sends it down.
A lot of times, those rooftop units are four or five feet.
Yeah, it might be about four feet.
I just have a little deja vu here.
Uh, you know, I, with respect to the, the lower, it's, it's called Unit One, the, the lower portion of the Promenade Shops, I mean, yeah, you can totally see those. You drive on Buckland, you look to the left, and the road elevation is higher than the top of those buildings.
Yep.
Absolutely, you can see those. You know, in this situation where, uh, what's the grade change, Dave, from, uh, from Buckland into?
About ten, ten, about ten.
Yeah, about ten feet, yeah.
Steve, would you like to make a motion?
Nine thirty.
I move we extend the meeting to ten fifteen?
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes unanimously, thank you. Okay. I, I just wanna state my concerns for the record. Um, the mural, I'm, I am concerned about, uh, the mural. I know you did bring up, you're looking for a little bit of, um, latitude, as far as what you're gonna put the mural on. Um, I'm really worried about the maintenance, um, you know, with UV rays and everything else, um, what it's gonna look like in a year or two years, or what your plan is on how often it's gonna be replaced. I mean, I did hear you say you wanna possibly freshen it up, um, but I'm also concerned that at some point, that mural might wanna be replaced with advertisement, and I know that's not the intent now, but I'm worried that could be a concern in the future, where it comes back and, oh, to keep this, um, grocery store here, we need to supplement it by advertising. Um, I, I've just got concerns. Okay.
We, we would agree to a condition that advertising is not, is not permitted.
Okay. Actually, I got a, I wrote approval conditioning limiting mural to art, not advertising, so.
That works for us.
Okay. Um, there was a request to reduce the lighting levels if that worked with the Whole Foods' after hour lighting levels, if that worked with the Whole Foods' plan. Is that something that the applicant's agreeable to, or has that been reviewed yet?
Oh, it's, it's a request for us to lower the light levels?
I believe that's what it was, right?
After, after hours, so.
After hours.
The way we designed it, and we can have Joe go into more detail if you like, but the way we've designed this is there are zones in the parking area that can be controlled, so some of the zones can be on, um, until, for example, if the store closes at ten, and there won't be any new customers coming after ten, but there'll be team members in the store, either restocking, or closing up, or cleaning, um, that some of the zones, some of the light zones would be kept on until some other timeframe. So, for example, if they're in there until midnight, cleaning and restocking. So, we, our proposal would be to look at, um, more, uh, functionally related zones for lighting, and, and again, what they can do is they can be turned down, they don't need to be turned off.
Now, you're talking for the parking lot, right?
Pardon me?
You're talking for the parking lot?
For the whole, for the whole parking lot, yes.
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
And I understand that, and that's, that's great.
We could do percentages, we could turn off some fixtures, um, and that's a way of lowering them.
If, if something became a problem in the future, we can address it.
Right, right, yeah. Yes.
Okay. Um, the blank retail space, ten thousand square foot, um, now, I was around at the very beginning with Evergreen Walk, and that retail space kinda fits the empty retail space sets, um, had basically a facade, facade with plywood in it. Um, I'm looking at your group as being more active in getting tenants, um, and I'm hoping we're not making the same mistake.
Right.
And having that eyesore there for, you know, ten, fifteen years.
Sure.
Okay.
It's a, it's a valid concern, considering how it's moved along. I, I can say that just being able to announce that Whole Foods is a tenant here has significantly increased leasing activity. Obviously, you're aware that we have, um, locations for Old Navy and Sakura relocated into the center. Sakura will be closer to LL Bean, and Old Navy will be in the old Johnny Rockets space, that entire building.
Yeah.
And so, you know, moving them into the core retail area, moving Sakura into what is really a, uh, the event area, we think is gonna be very great, good for them, and those tenants are excited about their new locations. So with those moves, um, and other leasing activity, um, you know, o- obviously, you know, there are several tenants that are interested in being immediately next door to Whole Foods, so we're, we're, we're comfortable that that will be leased shortly.
Okay. Um, I believe that's all I have for concerns. Um, Commissioners, anything else regarding this?
We did give a letter.
Yeah, um, basically, uh, we got a letter from our Economic Development Commission supporting it wholeheartedly unanimously, so just to put that in the record.
Thank you.
Okay, sure.
Mr. Chair, I move, we approve application twenty-one dash thirty-two P. Uh, the Evergreen Walk proposed grocer.
With the.
The standard, uh, um, conditions one through twelve, however, condition two, uh, this application is subject to the conditions of approval in Wetlands Agency Conservation Commission, including bonds in the amount of twenty thousand dollars, to, to ensure compliance with the erosion and sediment control measures, and twenty thousand dollars to ensure establishment of a stormwater system, and ten thousand dollars to ensure proper installation, follow-up inspection, and maintenance of mitigation measures to be held three years. And condition four, a landscape bond in the amount of ten thousand dollars is required and must be submitted prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy as work is not completed. And then, condition thirteen, uh, stamped concrete or other treatments should, uh, shall be added to crosswalks throughout the development. Condition fourteen, engineering comments dated July thirty, twenty twenty-one shall be addressed to the town engineer's satisfaction. Uh, the proposed, uh, conditions fifteen, the proposed mural, uh, will not contain advertising, but will be limited to, uh, art. And condition sixteen, um, a program to reduce, uh, lighting, uh, in off-hours, uh, will be, uh, employed.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second under discussion. Anyone? Um, just.
There was mention of a bike rack, I don't know if we wanted to put a condition that the bike rack, she'll be added, and.
You wanna?
How, how much of a bike rack should we put in?
Well, it's gonna be in accordance with six point seven, I think they only, there's a certain formula based on square footage for bike racks, so they should comply with that section of the regulation.
Condition, and I'll add, condition seventeen, uh, bike rack, uh, will be provided in accordance with the.
Six point seven three.
Six point seven three.
Okay. Bill, do you accept that?
Yeah.
Okay. And, um, we had the, um, mural for advertising, but, um, what's, are they gonna come back to us with, uh, some, like, spec sheet on that or something of what it's gonna be put on, or?
You know, I think, um, Karen had offered to come back to design review at that point, maybe approval condition to return to the commission with details related to the mural design materials and.
Don't, don't we have an arts commission or of some sort that could look at this for us?
I believe there's an arts commission that's been discussed about at the town council, I'm not sure exactly what.
I don't, I don't think it's up and running yet, though, is it?
But we certainly can put, um, the applicant in touch with the arts community here in South Windsor, I know through the library and whatnot, there's certainly resources.
Yeah, but we need something specific regarding that.
Just that they'll come back.
Come on, go back to architecture review?
Well.
We could have something as general as the applicant, where we turn to this commission with final design of materials and mural for the rear of the building.
You go with that?
I guess, I couldn't understand all your words with a mask on and all, but yes, I'm good with it.
They were great, Steve.
Just, just that the applicant will come back, uh, and review with the commission the plans for the mural.
Very good.
Okay, Bill, you accept that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, anything else, Commissioners? Okay, uh, then we'll call the question, all those in favor of the motion of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Just a little plug for the new members, it's really great to see young people involved in this somewhat thankless job. It's where I started when I was twenty-two years old, so thank you.
So that was only a few years ago, right?
It was last week, exactly, yeah.
Okay. Um, our next item is application twenty-one dash thirty-one P, ten sixty Main LLC, Housing Authority, Town of South Windsor. Um, Michelle, do you have a, a report on that or anything, or, or are we just?
We just, at action time, I don't think there's anything left from the public hearing remaining.
Yeah. Okay, uh, Commissioners, we did have, um, a chance to think about that, I don't see any heavy lifting. Um, is there anyone besides Steve who would like to make a motion? I just want full participation. I'd love to see every member do a motion.
Steve's great at it, but I, I'd like to make a motion to approve application twenty-one dash thirty-one P, and that is, uh.
With those following conditions.
Yes, sir.
With those following conditions. How many you got?
This is, uh, hang on.
You got the right one?
I got it right here, sorry about that. That is application twenty-one dash thirty-one P, uh, ten sixty Main LLC and Housing Authority, Town of South Windsor. Uh, there's a list of moni-, standard approval modifications for site plan.
You got the right one?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Have it.
And special exceptions, uh, one through thirteen, any certain ones I should read off, Mr. Chair?
Um, well, just conditions one through thirteen, if they're not italicized, then they're standard condition, but.
Understood.
If they, if they have a bond amount, then it should be read out.
Okay. Any italicized, one is number thirteen, I see.
What?
Only italicized one is thirteen.
Well, you gotta do, you gotta do, uh, one through two, standard, three, you gotta read four, you gotta read five through, uh, twelve are standard, and then read thirteen again.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep.
And they're done this, so. Thanks for your patience, sir. Uh, all right, number one, special exceptions form to go on file, number one, prior to commencement of any site work, a meeting must be held with town staff. Number two, no building permit will be issued until the final milers have been filed in the town clerk's office. Number three, this application is subject to the conditions of approval of the Inland Wetlands Agency Conservation Commission, including bonds in the amount of five thousand dollars to ensure compliance with the erosion and sediment control measures, and five thousand dollars to ensure establishment of stormwater system. Number four, a landscape bond in the amount of five thousand dollars is required and must be submitted prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy if work is not completed. And number five, all bonds must be in one of the forms described in the enclosed bond policy. And down to number. And down to number 13, engineering comments dated July 22, 2021 must be incorporated into the final plans.
Okay, and of course, six through 12 are standard conditions.
Six through 12 are standard.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Anything else we're not? Just for the record, I did just want to note that when we discussed this, this can be a good, if you want to call it affordable, complex for our residents. And what makes it affordable is they are smaller units. It's not per se a low-income housing project. There's no affordability component. What makes it affordable is it's smaller units and cost is usually per square foot. So it'll be a lesser, or it should be a lesser taxing or rent for our residents. That's what makes it affordable, being smaller. Any other? Okay. Hearing no other discussion, we'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Okay, our next item is Hartford Truck Equipment LLC. Who's making this motion? Well, we could, we did, and I'm not sure if this one, here it is. Before we make the motion, I'll turn to you for that, Alan. We talked about, originally it was a two-year temporary and conditional permit. I had suggested a one-year. And it really, I'm not sure how the rest of the commission feels about that. But whenever you're making a motion, a person who makes the motion always has the ability to alter what is suggested on this piece of paper. So I'll turn to you to make your motion.
I motion we pass application 21-30P, Hartford Truck Equipment LLC Temporary and Conditional Permit. Request for a two, one-year temporary and conditional permit for a truck storage area to accommodate 100 trucks, approximately one acre in size on property located at 542 King Street, G.C., N.R.R. Zones. And this one?
Yeah.
How about? Approval modifications for temporary and conditional permit, the project of Hartford Truck, one-year temporary conditional application, 21-30P, item one. This approval is for a truck storage area to accommodate 100 trucks, approximately one acre in size on property located at 542 King Street. All trucks should be parked within the fenced area as shown on the plans, item two. This two, this one-year temporary and conditional permit for this use will expire on July 27, 2022, I assume?
Yes.
The applicant shall return to this commission with a site plan modification to address this expansion, including meeting the butter requirements on the zoning regulations.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Wagner?
We were going to, although it's only now one year, we were going to put some conditions in on inspecting this berm, both for settling so that it maintains its 10-foot height and also for pest control. And I guess I would also like to say that not only inspecting it for pest control, but responding to complaints that might arise between the inspections. He indicated a twice-a-year inspection, or the, Mr. Doolittle indicated a twice-a-year inspection. I would say we put that like second and fourth quarter, or I don't know. If we're only doing one year, you know, when do we want those inspections done? Something like that.
I would think if it's a one-year permit, we would do an inspection once it's installed, which I assume would be this fall, and then again in the springtime. You know, a six-month timeframe. And just a point of clarification, I know July 27 was the original date we were going to act on this, but since we acted on August 17, the one year would be August 17, 2022, just for everybody's agreement.
Right, I believe that's what he said, right?
I think it was a July date was on the sheet, so I think he may have referenced July 27.
Oh, this sheet has August 17.
Okay.
Okay.
I think we heard wrong over here.
And he might have had an old sheet.
He had an old sheet, yeah. But, but I would suggest twice a year being the fall and the spring as far as inspections for the height of the berm, and if we wanted to add the insect.
Okay, so the suggested amendment is to inspect the height of the berm upon installation and again in the second quarter of 2022 with, to ensure that the height is maintained and ensure that there are no pests. Maybe you can reword that when you publish it.
Check for pests.
You're talking about a six-month inspection. That's going to be in the middle of February. You could have six inches of snow on there, aye?
Well, second quarter is April through June.
If it's a year, I don't know, that I would just forget about the six-month inspection and just let it go for a year? No. No? No, I, second quarter, I think, but sometime between April and June is a good idea. Or April, May. Now, are they expected to maintain this buffer in that if we see it settle? I mean, you get, say, a foot of snow on there and all of a sudden it settles?
If there's a question, we can certainly question them under the approval to have them check it previous to that. I mean, if there's a concern that it's really sunk down, we'll contact them, so.
Okay.
We can be complaint respondent to the neighbors as well if they have a concern, but...
I'm hoping it's...
From what I heard tonight, they're going to try to address it themselves, so hopefully it won't be a problem.
Yeah.
We should probably indicate who's going to do the inspecting also. Would that be the town engineer, or they would hire an inspector, or how, who's?
Well, I would say at the six-month inspection, I would like something to come in from design professionals demonstrating that it's 10 feet, because, you know, we shouldn't be responsible out there and measure it. They should have their professional measure it for us.
By a professional...
We run into problems with that with other sites. So I think it, maybe it's their obligation at six months to verify that the berm is still as originally planted and approved.
So should we put that specifically as an approval condition?
Yeah, I would, I would put that the applicant shall submit verification of berm height at six months or something along those lines.
And this is Alan's motion, right?
Yeah, we're just tweaking it for him.
Okay, so you're good with that, Alan? Okay. And Megan, you're good with that? Okay, good. So that was probably number four, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, anything else, commissioners? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Okay. Triglia Storage Lot. Another one. What's that, Bill? You're making this motion? Excuse me, Billy. Bill?
What?
Thank you.
How about that? Motion to approve application 21-33P. Triglia Storage Lot with the following conditions. One, the temporary condition permit will expire on August 17, 2023. But we changed that to August 17, 2022.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And must be renewed before the time if the use is to continue. All freestanding signs and temporary signs require the balance of a signed permit before they are erected. Three, a landscaping plan must be prepared and submitted to the planning department for approval. A landscaping bond in the amount of $3,000 is required and will be held for a full growing season after the landscaping is installed.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Not hearing any.
I did, I guess, I just feel like this guy's going to need a lot of help. I really felt like he didn't understand.
His son was in the audience, who I've dealt with before, and I gave him a copy of the plan, so we'll have discussions.
Great, thank you.
I know we got a great staff and they've all got their work cut out for them. Yeah, and we'll have to take a look at this again, see how his progress is after the year or prior to the end of the year, and then decide what we want to do. So...
You just gave me a, yeah, just a quick comment. You gave me a great idea. I would love to have the gentleman and whoever represents him to come back, like at midway progress, to see how he's doing. I would love to see that, because I was a bit concerned with the upkeep that he promised. That's all. I would just love to have him return maybe a halfway point and see how, how it's going in terms of that one year. Just my only comment.
Yeah. Typically, staff will keep an eye on that, the communication. They'll let us know if there's an issue, but, you know, when we give them a year, a year isn't really a lot of time. So I understand what you are saying, but we'll, we'll keep up with that. At any meeting, when we have time, it, it's always within your purview to ask for a report on a specific project at the end of our meeting or whatever, when we have that line item, such as old business, okay? So we have that motion. You're still good with it as it is? I'm sorry. Oh, okay. So we, we do have a motion on this, right? Yeah, we have the one-year motion and the second. Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Okay, now we have the discussion on the legislative changes, which we're finally getting to.
And I know I'm giving you guys a lot of information on, but what I have prepared tonight that I want to give you is, this is prepared, you know, we have a project we've been prepared by North Carolina Valley and Settled by Park, and they made us through and did a really nice job identifying what the law change was, what the implications are, and what action you may do as a planning and zoning commission, what action you might need to take. And it's a very thorough listing that they did. So I'd really like to give you that. I know I've given you a bunch of material, but I think this is going to be a really good resource for us to go back to, because it has the cutoff dates. Because as you know, with some of the legislative changes that were made, we have to take some actions, or if we don't take some actions, there's some implications to that. So, you know, we had to keep on track of that. But, but there's a significant number of things that have been changed that impact, you know, we need to talk about and do some things for. So I'm just going to give you this to start with, just because I want you to take it home. And I'm going to really speak to it as much as you want to talk to it tonight, because again, it's a pretty good sequence of law changes and the importance of them to us. So one of them is the general document that kind of relates to the gold document that I gave you, and the second one is strictly related to the cannabis law, because there are two, as you know, they're adopted at two different sessions, and so they have different things associated with them. But just kind of going down topic one here, just, just to kind of go over. As-of-right accessory apartments. So essentially what the law said, that every residential zone you have, you have to allow an accessory apartment as-of-right. Currently, the way we do accessory apartments in South Windsor is they are a special exception use. We have a bunch of criteria related to the size. We go through public hearing. We have to, you have to be either an owner that lives in the house or that. So, I mean, we, we have an in-law apartment regulation where we create a lot of apartments, too. So we have regularly, in the 30 years I've been here, created in-law apartments on a regular basis. We've created accessory apartments, not quite as many of them, but this law basically says everybody's got a single-family house can come in and apply for a building permit and get an accessory apartment on their lot.
As long as they have sewage capacity.
Sewage capacity, correct. So obviously, a lot of these changes that were done were to help affordable housing or create more housing opportunities in our communities. This one obviously being the big one. There is an opt-out procedure that the town can go through. In other words, if for whatever reason we feel that we don't, shouldn't have to be forced to have this regulation in our town, we can opt out of it. It's a public hearing process where your commission has to have a two-thirds majority agree to opt out of it, as well as your legislative bodies, so the town council would also have to agree. So that is something that we as a, you know, group need to discuss. I can certainly provide you with trends of accessory apartments, you know, how we've handled them in the past, what our regulations say. Kind of in the background which is going on is our affordable housing study, which is also looking at, you know, going to be looking at things like accessory apartments and things like that. So we're not having to do anything immediate about it, but by 2023, if you haven't changed your regulations or opted out, this law becomes effective in essentially their, in as-of-right type of use.
So as a, as a good practice, if we, even if we don't want to opt out, shouldn't we change our regulations to be consistent with this?
Yes, we need to do that. We need to look at our regulations and see, and just to give you a real, just quick example someone brought to my attention fairly recently. So in our in-law apartment regulations, we allow you to have the 900 square feet for an in-law apartment. But if it's just Bart that we're going to put an apartment in our house for, he can only have 700 square feet on the accessory apartment. Why the difference? What are we, you know, those kinds of things are the kinds of things that are being looked at as being, I don't want to say discriminatory, but are being questionable of why you're allowing something here and not allowing it there. So there's a lot of fairness and things like that, that our regulations, I mean, by no means, I mean, we're a community that allows apartments. There's communities out there that you couldn't get an accessory apartment if you wanted one. So, I mean, we're, we're good that we allow some of this stuff, but I think how we allow it is where we're going to have to take a look at moving forward. So the accessory apartments are kind of the biggest one that you, you kind of hear about in a lot of communities, but there's a lot of other subtle ones. I'm not going to spend much time on topic two. We, you know, we have staff, so we do a lot of our reviews, and we do have some consultant money in like my budget where I get a traffic review or whatnot, so I don't really want to focus on that one so much. Topic three, these are just some things, again, we're going to have to be looking at how we do some of our wording and some of our, our documents. This, this is where it gets into the idea of character, you know, you can't deny something based on the character. It gets into a lot of nuances, so that, that kind of stuff, I, again, I give you this, you can read through and see what they're highlighting and some of the things that, you know, some may apply to us, some may not, and we may need to do some tweaking in some of our language. I think of our village district, which is our overlay, village in town center, you know, we base a lot of that on the character of our town center, so we may need to, to look at some of the wording in there and see if that needs to be refined a little bit to be more in line with what the law says. be more in line with what the law says we need to be looking at. Um, one of the things in here is talking about mobile manufactured homes. You can't treat a mobile home any different than a manufactured home. Well, we have two mobile home parks in town that we pretty much ignore even exist. We have no regulations at all for them. So I'm not even quite sure where we have to look at that. They're non-conforming developments in town. It, we have a regulation that says mobile homes are prohibited, so we flat out prohibit them in town in one section of the regulations. So everything that we have done on our, um, Main Street is non-conforming to another time, I think in the thirties, those things were put in down there. But there may be something that we need to do in our regulations to, um, not prohibit mobile homes. We do get calls.
To allow.
To allow, yeah.
Yeah.
Cuz we do get calls. I mean, I just had one last week, to be honest with you. Can I put a mobile home on my lot, you know? And the answer currently is no.
Yeah, um, I know, uh, Wallingford has a, a few very nice-looking mobile home parks. Um, so we might wanna check out their regulations.
Yeah, there may be, and again, right now, we have nothing for them. So someone comes in, there's no zoning, there, there's no guidance at all other than what the, the federal guidelines are for how they have to be built and, and the sizes and things like that.
And there are the microhomes that are something.
Right, so, so microhomes are something like, that's an accessory unit, popping that down in the backyard. Can someone do that? I mean, under accessory apartments, I think you can. So, you know, those are all kinds of things that, that, you know, we just gotta start thinking about, because there're gonna be things that are gonna, um, be addressed. Let me just spend a couple more minutes here and then I'll let you guys go. Um. So again, there's a section about the character and trying to get that out of your regulations. Uh, oh, cou- couple things, uh, parking, for example. You cannot require any more than one parking space for a one-bedroom apartment, two spaces for a two-bedroom apartment. I don't know if we, we, we may have a little bit of problem in our parking table where we think we have two, two spaces required in some of our, um, SRDs, maybe. I'll have to look at that, but, but again, the idea is that some communities were making the parking requirement so extensive for multifamily housing that it kinda killed projects. So that's just another, another way that they're trying to make towns not over-regulate in the parking area that kills projects. There is a way to get out of that regulation, uh, by, um, by vote, too. Uh, I think it is, yeah, it is in here. See, it's under, um. So, so just two, two other things I just wanna bring up really quickly is, uh, there is now biennial, biennial training for planning and zoning members. It's not starting till twenty-twenty-three, but you'll be required to get four hours a year, I'm sorry, four hours every other year. With one hour we're very specific about affordable housing. Um, there's all sorts of programs already in the state right now. I know we send you guys periodically information on it. I was on a conference call today, and OPM is responsible for putting up with guidelines, and so they're gonna come up with a whole menu of, of ways where you can achieve it, but the goal is that all commissioners will have at least four hours of training starting twenty-twenty-three. Also requires that your zoning enforcement officer be certified. Um, there's a local, I should say local, there's a state program for certifications of zoning enforcement officers. Um, our zoning officer is currently certified, so we do meet that requirement. Um, but again, that's now in law. Um, things related to the affordable housing, affordable housing plans required by law. We are in the middle of an affordable housing study with a consultant. Uh, we have to have that in place by June first of twenty-twenty-two. We're on target to do that, but again, this is a, a big push. A lot of these legislative changes were along with affordable housing and how we create more housing for folks. Um, and then Steve, yours was in here under.
Three D.
Yeah, I saw it somewhere. It's for promoting, um, energy. Did you see it right there? Yeah, three D, options for promoting. Correct, yes. So it allows for, to require or promote options promoting conservation, expand the energy conservation tools, include distribution, freestanding wind, and combined heat and power. I'm not quite sure I understand all that, what it's trying to do. I mean, might make letting require. So it gives you more power in that, that regard, in that. Um. So then the other one that, we'll just skip to this other document I gave you, and that's the cannabis document. Again, there is, this one's probably a little bit more time-sensitive, because if you choose to do nothing by the end of this year, then cannabis sales will occur like a liquor sale curse in your community, which is as-of-right in this town. So basically, would be handled like a site plan, any other kind of thing. Um. Cannabis can be handled two different levels. Your municipality, I mean, your town council could go ahead and put an ordinance that bans it. They could go ahead and regulate where it could happen in your community. They can put some kinds of things on it, like they don't allow it within certain distance of churches and schools and things like that. That can also happen at the zoning regulation level. Um, I know the town council had a brief discussion about it at their previous meeting. From what the town manager has indicated to me, I don't think they're looking to ban it in the community. They're looking more for some regulations to be put in place so that it's not next to schools and churches and things like that. Um, the state is coming up with their own set of regulations, which we don't know yet, um, so it kinda puts zoning commissions a little bit in a disadvantage to know what you're trying to regulate for, cuz you don't really know what all the rules are gonna be. There are several communities in our region that have gone ahead and put a moratorium on the sale, retail sales for seven months or a year, just till they know what the state rules are, and then they know how to make up their rules. That is certainly an option of something this commission could do. Um, just to give you a little historical perspective, with medical marijuana sales, your, this commission chose to handle it like a pharmacy, which is basically an as-of-right retail use. We do have one in town. Um, the same was with manufacturing. You, you thought of it as a manufacturing operation, long as it's inside of a building, you would handle it like any other site plan for manufacturing operation. That was a medical marijuana site. Obviously.
That also came with a lot of government regulations already.
So what's interesting about this law is it allows the medical marijuana people to become hybrid. Like, and I'm not quite sure if it's right out of the gate they get the rights to do it, but I've already been contacted by the local one, wanting to know if we're interested in letting him become hybrid. I've also been contacted by several other retailers in the region that are interested in moving into our town, so there is clearly an interest, um, for folks to come into the town. You're allowed, uh, one.
A cap? I was just gonna say.
Yes, it is. One, one retailer for twenty-five thousand and you round up. We just got our latest census data. You guys ready for this? We're just under twenty-seven thousand people in town. Twenty-six, nine, twelve, I think.
So we're at two.
So we'd be able to have two retailers and two cultivators, I think is what they call them. I believe we'd be able to qualify for those. So I guess the biggest decision for you guys right off the bat is, do you wanna do anything? At all? I mean, do you wanna wait? Do you wanna try to put a moratorium in place? Do you wanna, um, you, one of the advantages for communities to have retailers is the, the tax that's gonna be collected by the state, three percent, will come back to the community, and there's a list of potential expenditures.
Move we extend the meeting, uh, uh, till twenty-five after.
So. The motion to a second? Second? Second to extend the meeting? Oh, yeah. Check, check it. All those in favor say aye?
Aye. You know, one thing I, I've read is that the state is actually prioritizing where they're giving the licenses to those communities that have been impacted the most by the war on drugs and, and all of that. So, actually, we're not on the list. These Hartford is on the list. Uh, so, we may have a little more time to think about this than.
Yeah, you, the only part that I don't get is the hybrid part, though, because they're saying that already for hybrid people, they can start to look at licensing, and like I said, the guy called me already, so he clearly is interested.
Doesn't the town have to approve for whether they are gonna allow a use of?
The way the law is written, it says if you wanna do anything, you gotta do it by the end of this year, or if you don't take any action, then it's treated how you would sell a similar type use in your community, and I just think of liquor, cuz it's probably similar. I mean, that's basically what they say. You know, so, you, what you might wanna do if you're gonna allow it, you might want it allowed by special exception and have some specific parameters you're looking at, any, you know, some concerns of maybe parking or turn, you know, these kinds of things are turnover businesses, so you wanna make sure they're safe locations for cars coming in and out. You know, I think of like Blockbuster or something, like people come and go in and out of them fairly frequently, so you wanna make sure that you're those are some of the things you can look at for your special exception, I guess. There's a couple places that it have said they're not gonna do it. I, I don't know the lists off the top of my head, but I have seen that a couple places. I have the list of folks that are putting it.
And that was just approved by you, rather?
Which you can, and you guys could say you don't wanna have sales. The, the law allows you to do that, to, to ban it in your community, yeah. And it gives it two different levels. The town council, if ten percent of the voters did a petition, you'd have to take it to referendum. They, I think they're doing that in, um, one of the communities, Southington or something like that. I think I saw that, maybe. They push it to referendum and they voted it out, yeah.
Should we have a specific agenda item in one of our future mon- uh, meetings to deal with this?
Yeah, I, I think we would. I, I, I know I've inundated with a lot of paperwork, but this thing I just gave you tonight, to me, is the cleanest as far as what it is, what it means, and what you should think about doing about it. And I just thought that was kind of, um, I know, I. Approach it, cuz there's a lot of little nuances to these things.
I haven't seen any of these shops, so I don't know the whole premise of it. I know they're in Massachusetts, but I, I just, I'm trying to gather my thoughts here, but I haven't seen one, so I don't really know what the it's like a package store, like a CBD kinda shop. I, I don't really know.
You know, it's very interesting, cuz I, I have seen a couple of them. Some are new construction, some, you know, fit the area where they are. I remember going out in California years ago. Um, there's one in Westfield, it was brand-new construction. You know, a lot of these guys, like the gentleman from Worcester that called me, and he's telling me how great the, they're trying to make them into potiques, so I mean, there is a, a marketing to these, to try to make these things be, you know, places that people wanna go to, so.
So I'm assuming it's like, like a retail shop, but not a retail and consumption type of thing? It's, this is retail and you go?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
In a liquor store, you go and you pick out your product. Well, I know, I mean, you know, I don't know, with COVID, there are a lot of curbside stuff that's going on, so I don't know if, you know, these places do curbside, you know? So there's a lot of different things you could potentially need to at least think about, if you're writing a regulation for it.
Okay.
So maybe by the next meeting, we'll know if the council's gonna do anything specific or not. Um, like I said, I kinda got the impression they weren't gonna do anything like too specific, but it would, like I said, it can happen on two different levels. They could go ahead and put an ordinance and say you can't smoke anything in parks, for example. I mean, that, that would be, uh, something that the town council would do that wouldn't be your purview, for example.
Yeah, I think the mayor is, uh, certainly not, I've talked to him, he's not gonna do a referendum, uh, that day trigger, uh, anytime soon. Um, but, uh, you know, I think they probably are kinda waiting to see what's happening.
So the next thing we, I talked to the chairman, we were thinking about, one of our September meetings, it kinda depends on how things play out, whether or not the fourteenth will have a public hearing for Talbot Lane or not, um, that we might target that night for a discussion on regulations around changes, legislative changes.
Yeah, so. It's not looking like, well. Talbot Lane?
I think we decided if the public hearing didn't close on the first, we didn't wanna open our public hearing with the wetlands hearing still open.
Right.
So, um, we'll know the second. You know, we'll know the night of the first, but I'm thinking the fourteenth might be available for us.
Right, okay. Cool.
Cuz we just don't wanna get too far behind on anything where we're a time-sensitive, because for you folks, if we do do like, uh, let's just say we're gonna do a moratorium on it, we do have to send out a decree like any other text amendment, you have the thirty-five day.
Yeah.
That kinda time限制.
Yeah. We definitely need, I think, to put it on, on the fourteenth.
Okay.
For us to discuss it.
And so in the meantime, if you guys look through any of these, or you have any specific questions, email me or any ideas or whatever, um. Cuz I know this is, it's, it's a lot of stuff, and I didn't even get into the timetable changes that they made for application expirations. Some of them are worth nineteen years now instead of the five and ten.
Do we wanna refer the, uh, energy-related ones to the Energy Committee to have them come back to?
Really good idea, yeah. I can track down the actual legislation to. Get it, get you out, who's the Energy Committee here?
Okay, um, just back to our agenda, if you're all set with that?
Yes, I am. Thank you, thank you for.
Thanks. Um. We have, um, a bond for, uh, landscape bond for Home, Home Depot? If somebody would like to add on that?
Yeah, that was the berm, the landscape berm. Yeah, they cut the trees down on.
Okay, Commissioner LeBlanc?
Let's see, you have a landscaping bond for application nineteen dash forty-eight P, Home Depot berm. Uh, originally in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars, a reduction of twenty-five thousand dollars with a balance of zero.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second and a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We had minutes from... I just had them on top, too.
I move we approve the minutes for July twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Um, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I, I would just like to say that Caitlin is really doing a great job doing her minutes. Oh, she's new to the job and they're just coming out fine, you know?
Very good.
Awesome. So, uh, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, and I think that is it. A motion to adjourn would be in order.
Don't move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We are adjourned.